Welcome. Good evening. We will start tonight. If everyone would please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. We will call this meeting to order at 5:02 and we're going to jump right into this. We get to hear from Mr. Moore tonight and about on some of the programs and other investments MPS has historically made in education, other program and other programming as a reminder in our efforts to facilitate a timely and efficient meeting. Mr. Wing here on timer duty and thank you for doing that. And Mr. Moore, we're going to turn the time right over to you.
Thank you, President Davis, members of the board. I'm actually going to let Dr. Strom take the first couple of slides and kick this presentation off.
President Davis, members of the board. Here is why I'm kicking this off. These are public meetings and we don't want to cause any anxiety within the district, but the projected enrollment declines with classes of forty-five hundred graduating and thirty-two hundred students coming in in kindergarten suggests that the district is on a pathway to probably not experiencing the growth that was happening in the nineteen eighties and nineties and early two thousands. And so when you grow as a, as a school district, you can implement new programs and add new stuff and some of the programs we implemented are from the seventies and they may need to stick around. Some of the programs we've implemented are from the early two thousands and they may need to stick around. But the board is ultimately responsible for the budget, right? That's a board exercise. It's in state statute. And so this presentation is about being proactive for twenty-seven, twenty-eight planning and beyond. Let me say that one more time. Being proactive for twenty-seven, twenty-eight planning and beyond. Current year planning is already done. We gave you an AFR report last board meeting that was saying that we're still in a pretty conservative position from a financial perspective. We planned out twenty-six, twenty-seven right now and we're trying to design twenty-six, twenty-seven items so we have as little impact on schools as we possibly can. And by that what I mean is we're reducing district office staffing by forty FTE and three point six million dollars and that's helping our budget out into the future cycles. We do know that via the formula there'll be a need for a few less teacher contracts and we're hoping that between retirements and people that decide not to be back with the district again next year, maybe we don't have to do some of the things we had to do last year, but time will tell on that. But between the couple counterparts of less students means less teachers and then what we're doing at the district office, right? We're hoping to plan for twenty-six, twenty-seven for that. So this presentation is not about next school year. I need the community to hear that. It's about planning for twenty-seven, twenty-eight and beyond and helping the board understand like where are we making budget choices at? So it's just informative, right? Because without information for the governing board on where we're making choices at, then your job's really difficult because you'll get hit with this idea and you'll say yes to this idea, but then that causes downstream effects with six other things over here. And you gotta, everyone, not you, everyone's got to understand that everything in school systems is really interconnected. And so when you pull a string here, six other things happen over here. And so that's what this presentation is about is trying to help people understand all decisions that have been made for years, not ill decisions, very reasons, reasons that these things happened with good intent, with great student outcomes, right? But now in the position we're in with declining enrollment probably being something we feasibly are going to have to deal with for the next five years, these are things that we need to talk about now. Next slide, please. So twenty-seven, twenty-eight. This next year, we're planning with these items right here. I already talked about these, so I don't need to address them again. This is how we're trying to address twenty-six, twenty-seven. So if anyone's saying, what are you trying to do for next year? It's right here in front of you, right? And we're thinking this solves or makes our budget solvent for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Keep going. And so now this is about planning ahead for twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Tyler.
Yeah. So as part of my job, I analyze the financials of the district. And so as Dr. Strom alluded to, either we're finalizing a prior year of financial or we're looking forward a year or two years ahead. And so what this presentation again looks at is a couple of years ahead and just looks at some of the choices that we make on a budgetary basis that affect our budget. I'm going to jump ahead here. So like I just mentioned, this is an assessment, analyze, the analyst, excuse me, analyzes both revenue producing programs and those funded primarily through district allocations or M and O capital budgets. Looks a large part in programs that depend on M and O funding to remain financially stable as with declining enrollment. That is a state formulated budget that affects drastically the M and O budget. So looking at those programs and some of those that are revenue producing or needing to rely on the M and O budget to sustain itself. I do want to say, there's a lot of, big disclaimer right on the slide. This, this exercise is intended to be a high level overview of a few investments that Mesa Public Schools makes. It's important to know that this like analysis is a snapshot in time. So a lot of the data that I've used is either prior year. There is some current year stuff, but I want to know that this is ever-changing, right? If we receive a deposit or a donation tomorrow, that's not included in these numbers and can change the context of some of these revenue or versus expenditure conversations. So just know this is a snapshot in time. It's not a detailed audited forecast, right? Like I just said, there can be a lot of evolution or changes through these programs at any given point, but the really the purpose is to share the findings at a summary level to guide ongoing discussion and planning as we future plan for the district. So I'm going to start off with some easy ones. Compensating absences. So compensated absence is a fancy term for a liability that the district has for employees unused leave such as vacation and sick days, right? So we currently have a policy in our contracts where we allocate leave towards employees, full-time employees, part-time employees and/or vacation time. And upon termination or retirement, that is a liability to the district and that that liability is a financial liability. And one, one of the main reasons why we have a carry forward in M and O, because again, at any given point, right now we are sitting at approximately twenty-five million, that's unaudited and unused leave and/or vacation payout. And so if all those employees were to leave, we would be liable for twenty-five million dollars to pay out those employees, right? We're not intending, nor do we hope, all our employees leave at once, but it's important to have reserves in the instance where those liabilities come due and we need to, we need to pay those. So twenty-five million, and you can see over the last couple of years that has grown and that ebbs and flows as employees, either long-tended employees retire and new employees come onboard. So that's, that number ebbs and flows. Next one. Pay for performance. This is specifically talking about non-certified employees, so classified, hourly, administration, any employee or non-certified staff that's not currently in the classroom site fund plan right now. So all our employees who are in the classroom site fund plan, the certified staff that are eligible, they're, those are paid from classroom site fund dollars. And just in the last presentation, the AFR, you saw the, the dollar amount in there. So that is very sufficient and it covers the performance pay for those individuals. For individuals that are not in that plan, such as again, like I said, classified, hourly and admin, MPS has had a practice of paying a performance pay and we do not, at the state level, via M and O dollars, get any revenue for that performance pay. And so it's, it's in essence, a straight expense to our M and O budget to offer performance pay in our district to those non-certified, again, classified, hourly and administration positions. Again, counter to the certified people who have a specific bucket of funding to support performance pay. So no revenue in that as of FY twenty-five, that's audited numbers, is three point five million dollars in performance pay that we pay out. That again ebbs and flows with the number of positions we have and those eligible for performance pay. Propane buses. So MPS has a large, the majority of their fleet is propane driven. This is a decision that was made, you know, well before, only three months, obviously well before my time, but I think it's been a history ever since I've worked in Arizona, MPS has historically offered or, you know, maintained a propane fleet. There's some benefits to running a propane fleet. One, there's several grants for clean, clean energy, one being, one that Mesa received more recently in twenty-three was a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar clean school bus federal grant for again, running a propane fleet. A couple of benefits with propane buses, they're, they're more cost effective than diesel, typically have a lower purchase price, easier to maintain in-house, produce fewer emissions and again, support clean air for our students in the community. While propane buses require more frequent fuel, fuel delivery within our current capabilities at our, at our three yards, it's typically more cost efficient than diesel fuel and bringing in diesel trucks. Now, in addition to that federal grant that we received in twenty-three, we do receive currently annual rebates to operate propane fleet. To date, we've received just under a million dollars in rebates from federal, federal rebates. Now, with the uncertainty at the federal level, I don't know how, how much longer these rebates will be in place, but we have gotten no word that they won't be in place for future, but we just want to asterisk that, that as of today, we've received a million dollars, but again, we don't know the future implications with these rebates. And then that may bring into question whether or not propane is more cost effective than diesel when, when these rebates go away. So again, a choice we made maybe because of these rebates. And so now that will maybe be a decision that we need to reevaluate in future years when these rebates go away. Course fees. I was not here last year, but it was my understanding that last year there was a decision made by the board to remove course fees with regards to materials within the performing arts program and the career technical education courses. The allocation from M and O to help supplement those course fees, right? The loss of revenue was three hundred and sixty thousand into this year's budget. I think that was an estimate Mr. Thompson and Mr. Alexander worked through to make sure that those dollars were dollar for dollar matched coming into this year. Now, as the, so again, we took away the revenue from this course fees, we allocated three hundred and sixty thousand dollar M and O budget. And so you can see the difference, it's straight three hundred and sixty thousand dollar difference in terms of costing them and O. That, that's the implication of making that choice. Now, we will, we will monitor this, this year and ensure that if we did increase users with our courses and we need more, we need to allocate more revenue, we'll factor that into twenty-seven's budget. But again, I think the intention was to match dollar for dollar, ensure these programs did not have revenue loss with taking away course fees. And so we'll continue to honor that, but that, I would just say that budget three hundred and sixty thousand may go up in future years as the needs for those programs change based on student count. Okay. The Mesa Youth Creative Agency, MICA. This was a district-led workforce development initiative that empowers high school students to work in real creative agency environments. So our MICA programs over at Historic Irving and they received a couple of grants. So the first one, a one point two million dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four and another million dollar grant coming into this year, twenty-five, twenty-six. That grant ends on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. And to date, as we monitor expenditures and encumbrances, we are currently, they currently have some revenue that they bring in from their projects, about seventeen thousand in revenue from their projects that they do with different agencies, one being the city of Mesa. Expenditure and encumbrances, a lot of those are the salaries and benefits and then this, this paid students for the work that they're, they're creating. So that's the five hundred and sixty-eight thousand that is currently expended and or encumbered for the rest of this year. And then the ending balance this year without the grant would be approximately five hundred and fifty thousand. Now, if we didn't have the grant, that would be more than likely an M and O expense that we would have to absorb, but we do have the grant in place and that is, we're thankful for that at this time. And so with the remaining grant funds of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, we anticipate ending the year with a balance of about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand for MICA going into next year. Now that begs the question, like, what do we do with MICA? And we fully intend to support MICA through the end of twenty-twenty-seven through May, but again, as we're planning for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, like Dr. Strom alluded to, will be, this will be a question for the board as we go through our budget discussions. Okay, our Mesa Distance Learning Program, MDLP. So MDLP is our online instruction program. We received, the way the online instruction works at the state level in terms of M and O dollars back, there is a reduction that the state takes for students who are full-time in AOI. So we only get ninety-five percent of that funding and then part-time students, we only get eighty-five percent of that funding. So some of the AOI programs that we offer, students do take advantage of within the Mesa Distance Learning Program. And we do get revenues for that and you can see that example on the, on the page there, two point two million with regards to students who are enrolled in the program and the funding that we receive at the state level. Mesa, one caveat here is Mesa also provides full-time students, brick and mortar students with up to one free course per semester. And that, that has an estimated cost of waived revenue. So that one free course, we do waive those fees to take that course or to take the, the online program. And so that is approximately five hundred and sixty-four thousand. And so with revenue minus expense, the Mesa Distance Learning Program, like most programs in the state, operate at a deficit. This is not abnormal. This is a add-on, this is a benefit to bring an AOI program for our students to give them that option of different educational experience via online versus brick and mortar. Okay, a couple more here. Choice transportation. So with regards to our, our board policy, policy three dash three oh two, we may, we have a language in there that allows us to transport students of choice schools with no parameters per se. And so we've created some decisions with MPS in terms of transporting choice students, choice students that go to choice schools. In that decision, there's obviously a financial implication to that decision. So with revenue, so when we transport students to and from school, we do receive revenue from the state. There is a state formula for that, for that transportation to and from school. Now, with the choice transportation, we do some things that are not eligible for state revenue, such as double backing on routes and in providing additional routes in excess of just to and from school. And so when you take into consideration the revenue received from our obligation to take the student to and from school, we get about one point two million dollars. Those other routes that are not included and the routes that often extend well beyond what we do for other boundary schools, costs us about one point six million. And so we run in the negative with regards to choice transportation, about three hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Two-minute warning with, I think, six slides left.
All right, we're going to move through these. Full-day kindergarten. I think the board is well-known, well-aware that full-day kindergarten at the state level is funded at halftime. We only get point five funding for every full FTE of kinder-enrolled students. Now, you may look on here and see like, why is that not half? Why, why does the revenue from the state versus our expenditures for teachers not equal half? There's a couple of reasons. And part of my disclaimer earlier was it's very hard to, right now, we don't have a, we know there's several aids that support the kinder classrooms, but those aids sometimes come in and out of that class. So there's not an easy way to designate what aid is, is currently in the kinder room. So those are excluded. We know that we don't get, we offer full-day kindergarten, but we can't right now quantify the, keeping the lights on for the other half a day, keeping the utility. So a lot of those are excluded from this. This is just straight salaries for our kinder teachers versus the revenue received from the state. But you can see just at that micro example, we're at a three point one million dollar deficit. All right, small schools. I believe the board went through a example and looked at the revenue that we receive from the state versus the expenditures. This small school example is O'Connor Elementary. We use the ADM from twenty-twenty-five from last year and that you can see the revenue generated from that. That includes all the ADM and the group B weights for those students at that school. The expenditures include all salaries, benefits, utilities. I don't know if I'm going to make six seconds. Can I, can I ask for a couple minutes?
We'll extend your time.
Thank you for, for President, for granting me a couple of minutes.
Your time has been granted longer.
So back to my, the, the revenue again is from O'Connor Elementary. Again, it takes into account all the revenue generated from the student count calculation from the state, two point three million. The expenditures include all our staff, utilities. We, in that worksheet that the board, the exercise the board went through, we do have that nineteen percent which, which has all that overhead and that's our approximate estimate that we use to support, again, all the overhead that goes into that campus. It should be no secret that the small schools typically operate at a deficit because at some point, the revenue from the state does not match the, the level of expenditures it needs to operate that school. Okay. I do want to note though, right? This is a caveat to the prior slide, that there's a complexity of repurposing small schools. Some of the complexity, the typical cost savings when it comes to having the conversation regarding repurposing schools, the, the cost savings is around six hundred thousand to a million dollars depending on a number of different variables. But for, for this example, we're going to go six hundred to a million. These savings are only really realized when those students, if you repurpose a school, stay within MPS, right? That is a key point in this conversation. So if we were to repurpose a school, right, and using an estimated savings of about six hundred thousand, that would be equivalent to revenue generated by seventy students. So we would need to, at minimum, what you can see, the savings, seventy students is the equivalent of six hundred thousand dollars. So when you get down to understanding or analyzing the decision to repurpose a small school, the impact, seventy students on six hundred thousand dollars of savings, it is a very difficult conversation to have. And then when you get to a million dollars in terms of estimated savings, that equals about a hundred and seventeen students. And so repurposing small schools is more than just the discussion of saving the money. If you can't retain or you can't significantly, if you significantly lose a number of your students outside of the district, repurposing could ultimately hurt your budget in the grand scheme of things, farther than the previous example of, of losing revenue maintaining a small school. Okay, preschool. Mesa offers several preschool programs throughout our campuses. One, one issue with our preschool programs is, comes with regards to a lot of our preschoolers qualify under Title I guidelines. And so a lot of their tuition is waived. So revenue that we do capture with regards to tuition paying students is often well below the expenditures that we spend to occupy those campuses. So you can see the revenue generated from two So you can see the revenue generated from tuition-paying students. And that also includes preschool with, students with IEPs or Group B disabilities, where we do get a portion of state funding. And then you can see the expenditures that we currently have to operate those schools. That leaves us with a balance of 3.6 million in the red. However, we currently have a practice of utilizing Title I dollars to help supplement the preschool program and waive tuition for our Title I eligible students. Last year, the way our Title I budget had the allocation, we did not capture 100% of the deficit that we were running. This year, in '26, we modified, Dr. Strom modified that allocation. And we're currently capturing, we're breaking even, per se, on our preschool tuition by matching the budget right now. But this program, it brings into question in future years, the sustainability of this as federal dollars at the, at this federal level, in terms of what grants they're offering in terms of Title I. And it just questions the sustainability of this in our current practice subsidizing the program from Title I dollars and how long that will last.
Mr. Moore, this is a prime example of when you pull one string to help out one program, a lot of other strings follow. And so what we can't then do, we only get 21 million dollars from the federal government for Title I. And when you give 6 million to preschool out of the gate, that then hurts the allocation that you can give to principals for things like reading interventionists and math interventionists and all those things. So that's what, it was just a nice opportune time to say, when you allocate here, then there's downstream effects over here, here, and here.
Two more slides. High school block schedules. So again, coming onboard new, I'm still looking at the financial implications from our current practice of block scheduling at the high schools. We intend to bring a greater financial discussion regarding this closer to December when we get some more data. But what we know at this time is, we're still trying to determine the true impacts, but we are realizing there are some impacts with regards to block schedules. So we'll bring this back at a future date. And then last, these are just a handful of choices that we make in terms of Mesa Public Schools and what we offer and the financial implications. Right, the goal was just to try to highlight some of the financial implications that we, that each of these decisions have. And so other educational options that we, that we offer that maybe the board will want to consider at a future date to discuss includes our district athletics. We have a HARP program, the Serine Montessori Elementary Specials. Administered facilities, as we look to consolidate, we offer one-to-one technology devices. And so how much longer is that sustainable? And so these are just, there's a, there's a number of choices that we make and there's a dozen more that we can bring up. But just trying to bring forward some of these decisions and understand the financial implications with these as we make budget discussions through the next couple of years. And I'm gonna let Dr. Strom close this presentation out.
All while, one of the main efforts in Mesa Public Schools has and always will be to make sure we compensate our support staff, our teachers, and benefit our support staff and our teachers to the best possible ability that we can. And so what you can see is when we're making these choices, right, not that they're bad nor good, they're investments. And some of them, we need to continue to invest in. And this, these are budget decisions of the governing board. But also a budget discussion of the governing board is how do we manage a budget that's declining at this point in time due to declining enrollment and still honor the fact that in an inflationary environment with pressures that are happening in an economic industry throughout the nation in the United States, that we still want to try to get as many dollars as we possibly can into the salaries and benefits of the people that work for us every day. And so we just want you to know, this is, I promised the board when I interviewed that we'd be transparent. And this is in the spirit of transparency with the governing board. And much like we did with, you had asked, I think Member Chaffey had asked for summaries on funds that we use, Fund 596, fund Title I funds, IDA funds. And we're thinking, maybe we can put some videos together for you and share like, how are we using these funds in Mesa Public Schools? Maybe there's a similar methodology with some of these, like, tell us more detail about this and tell us more detail about that. But these are high-level summaries of some of the decisions that we're gonna continue to ponder '27, '28, and beyond. No decision necessary for '26, '27. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Moore and Dr. Strom. I appreciate the information. I'll just turn it over to board members with discussion questions, and I'll start with Board Member Hutchinson.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the, first of all, I want to thank all the folks who have emailed me the past two weeks. Your emails were very enlightening and helped frame the questions that I'm going to ask. One of the questions that I do have is, in the third slide, it says that the redesign of district administrative structures is an estimated saving of 3.5 million dollars. The question, the one question that I have is, I would like to see how we are saving that money. That, as a matter of fact, I think we just got an email from you, Dr. Strom, that says that that savings is even greater. So if you could please show us where the savings is occurring. I'm kind of feeling like Missouri here. Show me, okay? And then the other, the other thing that I would like to make mention of is, and sometimes decisions that were made by prior boards might not be understood. But I was on the prior boards. The propane buses was not about, necessarily about rebates. Though the rebates are nice and they supplement MNO, it was about air quality. And what air our kids were breathing at the bus stops and in front of our schools and making sure that all of those gases didn't go into the front lobby and that type of thing. And it was about air quality and kids' health primarily. The other question that I have is, is about Mesa Youth Creative Agency. It was based on a program in Boston called Artists for Humanity where kids learn to be entrepreneurs. They learn to be entrepreneurs in a creative economy. And the model that we saw, only 25% of the budget was revenue generated by the students. Another 75% was either made up by grants or rentals. And Supervisor Thomas Galvin has invested in this program twice with grants from the county at the tune of a million dollars each. So I would say that there is certainly support for this type of entrepreneurial workforce development. And that, and that it was never intended that it would be self-sustaining. The other thing that I wanted to ask, and this is my last question, transportation. Mr. Moore, you mentioned that choice schools have transportation. Which choice students get transportation?
The choice students that get transportation are the choice students that have been grandfathered into transportation by this district. We have not extended transportation options for kids. So an example of what doesn't, Serine Montessori was not grandfathered in. It was a brand-new choice school and the Serine Montessori parents do not get transportation. They transport Franklin schools have had transportation in this district for years and they continue to get transportation in this district. So the delineating line is, things that traditionally have gotten transportation do. Mesa Advanced Academy has a transportation routes throughout the district. That's more of a gifted service academy, the IB Academy, let's put it that way, than it is a choice school probably. But that is one that you'd probably put under that lens of a choice school.
Does Highland Integrated Arts Elementary, are they grandfathered in?
They have routes. I think they're all neighborhood routes. I'm looking to my historian on the left here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson, Mrs. Benson.
Thank you, Madam President. So I would like to ask for the compensated absences. We pay out at a rate of approximately $85 per day, correct? So that's, like, when you retire, correct?
I don't believe that's necessarily correct. It varies depending on the employee group. It's based on the starting salaries and there's a math formula to it. But I believe for certified administrators, it's over $100.
Okay, so I think this potentially could be looked at as a, something to revamp, not to necessarily eliminate, but to revamp. Because as I was looking and considering this one, we pay our subs $140 a day. So even if we're paying admin $100 when they, when we cash out their days off, we're saving 40 bucks, right? So I'd like to see what portion of our salary budget goes to subs. This seems to me like if we become creative with this compensated absences by reducing the number of subs that we need, it actually saves us money because it's approximately, what, 60 to, 40 to 60 bucks minimum, right? Give or take? So is that something we can get creative with?
Certainly something we can look into.
We can explore options. And a reminder, Mika for recommended, the board approved last year, reducing administrators in classified 12-month exempt and certified 12-month exempt. When they're hired, they'll have a reduction, they'll have less vacation days than current folks. So it went from 22 to 15. So every time we hire an administrator, 12-month certified, 12-month classified salaried employee supervisor, for example, they'll have, they'll earn seven less vacation days. And so over the years, we'll see some of, but that's only one strategy of what could be made.
Right, well, I'm thinking of it even in terms of, I think, I don't remember how much certified teachers get, like, 10 or 12, or 10 or 12 days a year. When we have a sub, yes, sometimes it's absolutely necessary, but it is disruptive to the overall education. It disrupts learning. When we have situations where, I mean, perhaps we incentivize our people to stay unless it's absolutely necessary to be out, like, you're sick, I don't want you here, right? But we actually, if you have continuity, the student outcomes are gonna be better. One of the things that I observed in my tenure is when we had situations, like, right now, we only pay at, we have to have five years of continuous service. But we have some of our, our teachers that are under five years who are very committed. They're here every single day. And then they realize that they're either moving out of state or they have a different job opportunity. Wait a minute, I'm not gonna get paid for any of my vacation days because I've been here for five years. So what do they do? They call in sick the whole last quarter of the year. Which is totally disruptive to the educational environment of students. So I think that this needs to be revamped and brought up to, brought it, I think we can get creative. Second, our propane buses, if you were to switch them back to diesel if you didn't get rebates, wouldn't that be more expensive than maintaining a propane? Okay, so I don't think that's a good idea.
Ms. Benson, Member Benson, it's come twice already. The propane bus slide was more about helping people understand the reason it's cost-neutral to the district. So first of all, it is mechanically cheaper to fix propane buses than diesel buses. Second of all, the research on air quality is clear, particularly in the back of the bus and how it affects kids' learning outcomes. There's actually research articles on that. And then finally, what we want you to know is, if the federal government subsidy goes away, it'll actually be a budget add to the district. And that's our concern with that line item. Because yes, buying brand-new diesel buses or electric buses, electric buses are very expensive, would be a very big budget add to the district and we wouldn't be able to do it with our current funds. We'd have to go out for bond to do that.
Okay, thank you. And then I'll, I'll just mention one more, I, well, two. I think we really need to advocate at the state level to fund full-day kindergarten. That's been an issue for years. With transportation, one of the emails that I received in regards to the, an item in our regular meeting was that there were bus routes for the Franklin School where parents came to the bus, the bus stop waited five or 10 minutes, and then their kids got on the bus when, in fact, it would only take the parents like four or five minutes to actually get their child. So I think we really need to be looking at what transportation routes are, make sense, and which ones don't. Whether, whether or not they're a grandfathered choice model, some of them are not going to make sense. So I think we need to really be looking at that. And then the last thing I'm going to, that I'd like to say is that, I know that, well, two, sorry. We really need to look at block scheduling. That's gonna have a huge, huge impact on our. And I'd like to say that sometimes I think that when we look at something, we try it, we think it's, we thought it was a great idea. But if, in fact, it has such a financial bang on our district, we're gonna have to go back in order to go forwards. So the other questions I have, I will put on the spreadsheet and I'll pass it on.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson, Mrs. Walden.
Yeah, I'll just ask a couple of questions. If you could take notes, I don't need a response. We can follow up later. But I just want to add out there that I got this data from the county that we have 14,000 eligible riders in our district, but we have a capacity for 28,000 seats. So that means half of our bus seats are empty. So I think when we're, we're looking at transportation, that that's something that needs to be analyzed. Do we need as many buses as we have? And what we can do there, especially if we're looking at changing bus routes. And then the other one we, I think we could look into is that many of our state agencies have found that it's cheaper to have an agreement with Enterprise Car Rental than to actually maintain a fleet of vehicles. I think that's something that we could look at with some of our vehicles. And maybe it is, we find a cost savings in finding a car rental contract. And then with our portables, if we've considered, and I think this has come up from another board member, but looking at selling or auctioning the portables. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walden. Mrs. Chaffey?
Yeah, I really appreciate the transparency and that we are looking at setting up the district for future success, that we're looking ahead of, you know, several years down the road. Something that I don't need a response on tonight, but I'd like to see the pay-for-performance breakdown of admin payouts versus classified hourly, because those are two very different areas to me. So I'd like a follow-up on that. As a board, I'd like us, as we look forward, you know, my guidance would be that we make decisions, strategic decisions that are aligned to our board goals, which are student outcomes, that we look at how we are impacting the classroom. As a Mesa Public Schools grad and parent, I know how many incredible programs we have and I genuinely wish we were funded at a level from the state that we could have all of the things for the students all of the time. But as a board and in my role, I'm committed to making decisions that are supporting students and teachers and classrooms. And then one question that may be answered tonight or may need to wait on. I can see here that not collecting any class fees is putting pressure on our budget. And we are one of the few districts that doesn't collect class fees. And I've talked to a lot of teachers who've talked about how the lack of class fees has really impacted their classrooms and their programs. And as we've moved to block schedule and more options for students, it's put a lot of pressure on those classes as students take more electives. And I really appreciate that the decision was made to provide equity for all of our students across the district. But I know that the district has been looking at some creative solutions that have been implemented at our junior highs to provide that like equity and accessibility while also providing the opportunity to collect class fees. Could we get a follow-up on that and how that program's going at our junior highs? And kind of a look at how that has worked for the budget at those schools?
Thank you, Mrs. Chaffey. And I just want to thank Mr. Moore and Dr. Strom for the information. I think we have to have the information to be able to make these hard decisions. And like Board Member Chaffey said, we love all these programs. And so it's hard to even consider like having to make these difficult choices because it's hard. And we want everything. I mean, we live in a day and age where, you know, everything is right there at a touch of our fingers. And so we want our kids to have all these opportunities, but it does come with a cost. And so we have to be mindful of what is, where we're, where we're at right now in this day and age. I do, we were talking earlier at the Mesa Foundation Breakfast this morning about even MICA, looking at like, can we team MICA with our design, with our print shop? Are there ways where revenues, you know, different things by being creative and just trying to make things work? I loved seeing the MICA kids there today and what they're doing and what they can offer our district even. And so I think as we look at these different programs and different things, how can we get creative in making it work so we can all? get creative in making it work to, so we can all, and so we can keep as much as possible? Board members, any other questions? Okay. Again, thank you, Mr. Moore and Dr. Strom for the information tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Kirby, please take our vote. With a vote of five VAs, the meeting is adjourned at 5:46. We will return about 6:00 PM for a regular board meeting. We appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to Mace Public School School Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order at 6:02. A quick reminder, any citizen who wishes to speak on an agenda item or a call to the public must complete the sign-in sheet in the lobby prior to the public comment time on the board agenda. This evening, we are fortunate to be, have Westwood High School JROTC cadets Samantha Cruz, Emma Ianoli, Leslie Martinez, and Daisy Morales with us for the presentation of the colors. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Cadet Daisy Morales and Isabella Clay. After the pledge of allegiance, please remain standing for the National Anthem, which is recorded and features the Franklin Junior High Band. Please stand.
Please roll the National Anthem.
Thank you. Westwood JROTC may be seated. We will begin tonight with a governing, a video on governing board procedures, and then I will read a statement.
Welcome to the Mesa Public Schools Governing Board Meeting. We appreciate your interest in the district. The five elected governing board members served without compensation and volunteer countless hours. The president and the clerk of the board are elected in January. Under state law, the governing board may only discuss and vote on matters that are on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Agendas are posted at minimum of 24 hours in advance on the Mesa Public Schools website and in the Curriculum Services Center. Copies of tonight's agenda are located in the lobby. At every regular meeting, the public may speak on any item of business on the agenda that the board discusses or requires the board to take action. During the second regular meeting of each month, the agenda will include a call to the public. This is an opportunity to speak to the governing board about a school district matter that is not on the agenda. If you wish to comment on an agenda item or participate in the call to the public, please complete a request to address the board form before the designated time as public comment. The form is located in the lobby. The duration of public comment and call to the public is 15 minutes. Members of the public will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak once recognized by the governing board president. The president may set specific time limits for speakers and the duration to maximize the opportunity for individuals to offer their viewpoints. We ask that all speakers show respect and courtesy to others. Comments must pertain to the matter that is within the jurisdiction of the governing board. This is not an appropriate forum to complain about an employee, student, or others. State law prohibits board members from commenting on or discussing the matters presented at the end of the call to the public. The board may ask the superintendent to review the issue or place it in a future agenda. A board member may also briefly respond to criticism of a board member or the governing board. If you would like the board to consider adding an item to a future agenda, you may submit your request in writing, and the governing board president and superintendent will consider your request. Thank you for your attendance and involvement in tonight's meeting and for allowing this meeting to be conducted in a peaceful and productive manner.
This is an official governing board meeting. The board has important business to conduct that is essential to the operation of the district. Everyone is welcome to express ideas or concerns to the board in accordance with the agenda. The poster in the boardroom describes positive behaviors expected and behaviors that cannot be tolerated. Please speak and act respectfully and actively listen. Be kind, verbal harassment, abusive or foul language, intimidation, and disruption have no place in a classroom or the boardroom. Please no side conversations or reactive comments. They can be disruptive. It is a governing board president's responsibility to maintain proper order so the board can conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner. If you are disruptive or interfere with the conduct of the meeting, you will be asked to leave so the board can conduct the business of the district. We will move on now. Dr. Strom, will you please lead us through the review of the governing board calendar?
President Davis, members of the board. November 3rd, 2025, 6:00 PM, we have the East Valley School Board Consortium meeting out in Apache Junction. November 11th, 2025 is Veterans Day. No school and district offices will be closed. November 12th, 2025, school choice fair, Red Mountain High School. We're going to work to expand our two, school choice fairs over the course of the next three years. And for right now, it's at Red Mountain High School, and we look to, forward to showing all families in Mesa Public Schools, all the choice options that we have across the district. And November 13th, 2025, we have a meeting at 5:00 PM with a study session and 6:00 PM with a regular governing board meeting. That is your calendar for the upcoming month of November.
Thank you, Dr. Strom. I'm now going to turn the time over to Ms. Jen Snyder, Director of Communications. She will show us some of what's inside Mesa Public Schools. Ms. Snyder, it's all you.
Hello.
Oh, there you go.
There we go. Sorry, y'all. Good evening. It's my pleasure to share some of the things that's been happening around and inside our schools. So here we go. All right, October, it's National Principals Month. We are so grateful for the incredible principals across Mesa Public Schools. Thank you for your tireless dedication to our students and for upholding our promise, knowing every student by name, supporting them by strength and need, and preparing them to graduate ready for college, career, and community. Okay, and we're grateful to Go Daddy and their volunteers for brightening up Adams Elementary. In partnership with Hands-on Greater Phoenix, they built new tables, added games, and painted a colorful mural for students to enjoy. Over 50 students from Mesa Public Schools participate in Tech4Challenge: Remix the Future hosted by the ASU Mix Center. The students spent the afternoon designing tech solutions to make society more sustainable. Congratulations to the winning team, Mountain View Ace for Change, who pitched a compost and food waste app to help users locate composting sites and scan their pantry for recipe suggestions before the expiration date. Last week at Lindbergh Elementary, members from the city of Mesa and Superintendent Dr. Matt Strom joined students and families for a Walk, Bike, and Roll the School event for National Pedestrian Safety Month. The event launched the City of Mesa's Look Twice Challenge, a new initiative encouraging everyone to stay alert and practice safe habits on the road, especially around our school zones. It was a beautiful morning. The kids thoroughly enjoyed their hot chocolate. The energy was high, and it was, it was quite a wonderful event that has been going on for several years. All right, and then this is hot off the presses. This morning, it's always wonderful to see our schools and students connect to the wider Mesa community. Earlier today, members of the Westwood Spirit Line and Mesa High Student Council served lunch to the community at Asser Aging, located here in downtown Mesa. They had, they had Mesa High alums dating back to 1947, grandparents who went to Westwood and now have their grandkids that are going to Westwood. And it was just a wonderful way to connect our students and show them giving back and strengthening the bonds that we have within our, the wider Mesa community. All right, over to Unified Sports. Last week, Mesa Public Schools Unified Sports hosted a baki ball, bachi, I always say that wrong, bachi ball tournament on the football field at Mountain View. Westwood and Skyline High join the toros on the turf, competing alongside teams from other districts for a day of fun, friendship, and inclusion through the sport. Every student at Roosevelt Elementary received a free laptop this past Wednesday. Thanks to the generous support of the Myo Family Foundation, laptops for learning, and AZ Strut, students will now have powerful tools to learn, create, and connect both in and out of the classroom. And congratulations to Vicki Schumacher from Mountain View. She was named the 2025 High School Economic Teacher of the Year by the Arizona Council on Economic Education. This award celebrates outstanding teachers who engage students, pursue professional growth, and collaborate with peers in economic education. We want to highlight another one of our teachers who was named Honorable Mention Teacher of the Year at the AEF Awards. Congratulations to Adeline Mina, a sixth grade teacher at Patterson, for being named Honorable Mention at the Arizona Education Foundation Teacher of the Year Awards. With 13 years of teaching experience, she continues to make meaningful impact on her students every day. And that concludes today's, tonight's report.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Always great to see what's going on around the district. I'm going to turn the time now to Dr. Strom for tonight's recognition.
We are extremely grateful for members of our community who volunteer their time to help our students and our schools. If you haven't heard me talk to community members, getting students educated, getting them to gain literacy, numeracy, getting them workforce and work-based learning and credentials, it takes a whole community to do that. And so we're really grateful to honor people that understand a whole community coming together can really impact the lives of students. And so tonight, we're proud to recognize the ARP Experience Corp., who serve as tutors to students in several of our schools. Chad, can you please roll the tape?
Chad, this-
We can have as many of our schools participate in this program. It's just another layer to support those students who do need that help.
My name is Catherine White. So I am part of the City of Mesa's Education and Workforce Office. My title is Education and Workforce Coordinator. Experience Corp. is one of several projects that I work on or oversee. I felt really lucky that I got to come in and help get this program started. The City of Mesa is bringing together retired adults in the community and pairing them with students who need that little bit of time and help to become amazing readers. When I think about this program and I see the progress that the students make throughout the year, it makes me so happy and proud.
It's been a fantastic program in the sense that it helps our students not only in their reading, but what data has shown is the fact that it helps them in connecting with these adults.
With those relationships, they want to be here on Tuesday and Thursday because they know they're going to see their reading tutors.
And it has just continued to take off and grow. There is so much interest in the community from people, not only who want this in schools, but also people who want to donate their time to do this.
You know, I mean, we all want to give back to the community, and this seems like something very different and unique, to help somebody or be instrumental, even a small piece at the beginning, to be instrumental in that portion that is going to help somebody take off and in their later life, they're going to enjoy and be confident that, that's exciting.
It helped me to speak up and like, not like asking the teacher, what's this word and all that. I just know the word now.
We are so excited to keep growing and expanding in a sustainable way over the next few years. And really, I think with the community that we have and the partnership we have with Mesa Public Schools and the AARP Foundation, I really feel like the sky's the limit for the growth of this program.
If you are a member of ARP Experience Corp. and here with us tonight, please stand to be recognized. Thank you for all you do for our students. Next, we are proud to welcome the following MPS music programs who received the 2025-26 William E. Richardson Program of Distinction Award from the Arizona Band and Orchestra Directors Association, otherwise known as ABODA. When I call your name, please stand to be recognized. Red Mountain High School Orchestra, John Haggard, Director. Not here. All right. Dobson High School Orchestra, Rob Lubbers, Director. Mountain View High School Orchestra Director, Bethany Cross, Director. And Mountain View High School Band, Adam Rish and Steve Thuneman, Directors. As a, as a parent of three kids who all grew up on the violin and piano, we're just so appreciative of everything you do for our kids on a daily basis, and we're grateful that you won those state awards. We are now going to recognize our spotlight school, and then we'll take a quick break so we can have everyone get pictures with the governing board members. Jen?
Our school Spotlight of the Month is designed to provide our community with an inside look at our schools in addition to a video, which you'll see very soon. You got a little sneak preview there. We'll honor, honor a classified staff member, a certified staff member, and a student from the school. This month's Spotlight School is the Franklin Accelerate Academy, Jordan Campus. They are recognizing tonight PE teacher Jennifer Watson. Can you please stand? Office Specialist, Ruda Sweetser. And student Scarlett Jarvis. All right, can you please roll the video?
I really like these teachers. They're really nice, and the children and all my friends, they're really nice and supportive. It's like everyone knows everyone, and it's just a big community. Everyone tries to help out each other, and it's just, I'm so happy.
The library gets to use computers that have math games, and I love math because it's super fun to work with numbers. I'm, I'm actually a, a big pro of math.
I like writing the numbers. It gives me goosebumps.
I really enjoy like math and science.
Everyone's just always so engaged and having fun during it.
I like how they always help us.
They teach a lot of things that other schools haven't taught yet, like cursive.
I love having a good school who makes us feel safe, and I feel like our school really does that.
I really like orchestra, band, and choir because I love music and like playing musical instruments, and the teachers are all really nice.
I like doing 7:30 Club with Ms. Watson.
7:30 Club is where you do fun activities, and our PE teacher, Ms. Watson, always brings them really fun. This morning, we did like a course. You have to like skip over stuff and jump over it. It was really fun.
Bingo Busters is you get to pick a prize, and there's a star on the wall in the library. It's where the librarian, she has these bingo cards, and if you read through certain books, then you'll get your star on the Bingo Buster board.
Everybody was new here. Everybody's been through the same thing. These kids are very helpful, and they're very nice, and I've made lasting friendships.
That was pretty awesome. We will, we will now take a brief break to take photos of all our honorees with our governing board up front. You can join us if you're one of those honorees. We'll get our pictures taken. We also want to invite people to the regular board meeting. We'll, we'll start after this, and if you feel like it's time to go home for the evening after a long day teaching, we certainly understand. So following that, we'll continue our regular board meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
We will go ahead and continue on with our meeting. Thank you all for continuing on with us that are staying. This now moves us into... Where are we at now? I know where we're at. We are on to public comment. Just a quick reminder that Policy 1-302 says a call to the public is limited to issues within the jurisdiction of the board and is not appropriate for persons to complain about a specific employee, student, or other person. Mrs. Chaffey, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we have 16 speakers signed up tonight.
Okay, we have 16 speakers. You each get 90 seconds to speak, and Mrs. Chaffey, will you lead us through this agenda item, please?
Yes, I will. So I will call the first three names, then I will also call the next three names on deck, so if you'll just be ready. When I call your name, if you'll come and stand over on this side of the wall and then come up to the podium. You don't have to wait for me to call your name next, just listen for that person before you to finish. We're going to start with Dawn Richards, Nora Brady, and Stephanie Stork. On deck, we have Michelle Aaron, Mark Lowe, and Ray Dear.
Good evening, governing board members. I'm sorry, I'm talking. Good evening, governing board President Davis, governing board members, superintendent Dancy. I just would like to start with a quote from Henry Ward Beecher. "A library is not a luxury, but one of necessities of life." He also goes on to state how essential libraries are to every community. For schools, this is especially true. "A library is not an optional extra, but is a vital part of how children learn, grow, and develop critical thinking skills." By empowering our students to choose the books that they want to read is one of the first ways we encourage our students to take ownership of their own education. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please, I forgot to mention, will you please say your name before so we make sure that we get all of our public commenters? Thank you.
My name is Nora Brady. I work over at Sinus Elementary School. Good evening to everyone. The very first line of our district's promise says it all. Every student in Mesa Public Schools is known by name, served by strength and need, and graduates ready for college, career, and community. But before a child can be served by strength or need, they have to be known, truly known. That starts with their name. In our school, there is one place where every single student walks through the door, from kindergarten to sixth grade. It's not the office, the cafeteria, the playground, it's the library. As the media specialist, I'm the only person in the building who sees every child every week. I know who just discovered their very first favorite book, who's struggling to find one, who's reading two grade levels above, and who just needs someone to notice them. If we truly believe in the portrait of a graduate and creating ethical, inclusive, resilient learners, then we must protect the one space that nurtures all of those qualities. Because the library isn't just a room full of books, it's the heart of knowing, connecting, and inspiring every child by name. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Stephanie Stork. I've been part of Mesa Schools for 23, 24 years as a parent, a PTA board member, and the last 18 of those years as the library lady, the book queen, or the lady with the beautiful jewelry who reads us stories. I know every student by name and look forward to 100 hugs a day from students who excitedly tell their parents, "That's my library teacher." Our libraries are a safe place where students can grow their imagination through the stories they read from our shelves. Our lessons introduce them to new authors and illustrators that ignite a passion for reading. Our books help them to see themselves with characters as diverse and colorful as our students. In addition to books, we have continually updated our library lessons to include 21st Century Learning, like digital citizenship, databases, to help them with research, and so much more. On top of that, we are responsible for the curriculum on campus and ensuring that our teachers and students have what they need to teach and learn. We run book fairs, Battle of the Books, promote literacy by having authors visit our campuses, backup teachers by helping them find books and resources to use in their classrooms. Students in Mesa spend seven years in their elementary school, creating bonds they do not forget, not with just librarians, but their specialists. We're the ones who see them for those whole seven years, and we know them every year. They don't forget their specials teachers, and we're the constant for them.
Next, we will hear from Michelle Aaron, Mark Lowe, and Ray Dear. On deck, we have Carlos Fernandez, Mark Kimball, and April Bennett.
Hello, I'm Michelle Aaron. I'm a graduate of Mesa Public Schools, and I've worked in our district for 32 years. It's been the highlight of my career to work with and support our library staff as the District Library Services Specialist. I've been to all 78 of our libraries and know all of our librarians, so I know how caring, kind, and wonderful they are. I want to publicly thank them and acknowledge everything they do to provide access to books, improve literacy, and foster a love of reading for our students. First, I want to thank our governing board and district leadership for continuing to provide full-time staff and space to keep our libraries running, which is so important to provide access to books, improve literacy, and foster a love of reading for our students. Our library staff work hard and put in so much dedication, love, and often even their own money into their libraries because they love supporting students and spreading the joy of reading. Most people think running a library is easy, but there is so much more than just checking out books. Our school librarians are experts on their collections and their students' interests and needs. They promote books and reading. They make our libraries safe, inviting spaces that students want to spend time in. We are lucky to have skilled full-time staff that make our libraries the heart of our schools. Thank you for your time.
Family of Lowe, first name Mark. Good evening, Madam President, Board Members all. Tonight, I begin with an excerpt from a continuation from my September 25, 2025 comments and more. Grok replied, "Solid point on fostering critical thinking. Your linked 1976 piece by Rafferty highlights education's roles, pursuing truth, preserving heritage, teaching disciplined subjects, realizing potential, and ensuring national survival. Recent reforms at the Department of Education emphasize inquiry-based learning. Critics in Heritage Foundation report notes biases. Aim to balance this. What specific big ed practice concerns you most?" I responded, "In part, too many arrogant taxpayer-funded public servant superintendents who do not address FOIA requests." The Grok exchange ends here. I still have not received the identity for the taxpayer-funded Mesa Public School Architect and Project Manager for the measly $1.5 million front office security upgrade for Hale Elementary School made August 14, 2025. Your PR number 2025123. Now hear this. "The primary object should be the education of our youth in the science of government and of republic. What species of knowledge can be equally important, and what duty more pressing than communicating it to those who are to be the future guardians of the liberty of the country, George Washington? I wholeheartedly agree with our republic's first president, don't you? Thank you for your attention to this matter."
Good evening, board members. I come to you as a concerned MPS parent, community member, and supporter of MPS. I've identified a systemic issue that could potentially affect every single MPS employee. At MPS, site leaders have unfettered authority to begin the termination process where MPS employees and site leaders can ignore this board's directive to follow your time-tested best practices and corrective measures for MPS employees. Site leaders can place MPS employees on a performance improvement plan for 45 days without providing any corrective measures, without providing any communication, collaborative efforts to ensure the MPS employees equipped to succeed. No, site leaders can bypass all of that and proceed with termination process. This inherently creates a toxic environment at every district site. District officials have confirmed to me that once site leaders begin the PIP process, MPS HR must proceed with the MPS employee despite the site leaders having not done any of these matters to address this matter to prevent the issues. District officials have told me to trust the process. Yet, when I attend the PIP conferences for MPS employees, we are met with verbal intimidation, raised voices by an MPS official, and calling our issues, quote, "a joke" during the PIP meeting. This is unbecoming behavior of a tax-funded public school. We expect professionalism. One can say that, then where are all the termination requests that site leaders? Many know that PIP is code language for termination for your record to be tarnished. Therefore, I have seen MPS employees walk away because they can see the writing on the wall. They either choose a new site or new district."
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Strom, my name is Mark Kimball. I'm here as a grandfather, a community member. I'm going to have to paraphrase to cut mine in half due to the time restriction. This is troubling. It hits home. My grandson at Poston encountered a social studies class. His teacher played a video regarding George Washington and a lesson, very demeaning to George Washington, basically portraying him as an evil slave owner and pulling teeth so he would have teeth, pulling teeth from the slave so he could have teeth. Afterwards, he raises his hand and he says, "This isn't right." The teacher then asked, "Why do you say that? Are you a Republican?" She later pulled the class. Who's Democrat? Who's Republican? It's appalling. These students aren't there to be schooled in politics to learn about the process, but this was deeply concerning, and I could give other important aspects. He felt singled out and other students, and now other students are treating them differently in the class, completely wrong. Another thing, there's a movie named Iron Jod Angels that is shown in the social studies in Poston. It portrays...
Our next speakers will be April Bennett, Paul LaGrego, and Lauren Ogle. On deck, we have Carissa Routsong, Noah James Markham, and Vanessa Mayberry.
Good evening, board members. My name is April Steiner Bennett. I'm a proud member of a multi-generational family legacy in Mesa Public Schools of graduates that dates back to my great-grandmother. My six-year-old son is at Red Mountain STEM Academy, which I chose for its strong specials, well-rounded education, and STEM-based learning. I hope for him to become a fifth-generation Mesa graduate, but right now, the legacy feels uncertain. When I opened the recent parent survey, I was disappointed. It forced families to choose which essential programs to cut out: music, PE, art, library. These are not extras to compete against each other. They are foundational experiences that develop the whole child physically, emotionally, creatively, and intellectually. In music, I experienced playing instruments, learned to sing, loved PE field day, discovered the library over and over again, and found an art talent. I was academically supported through athletics and became a state champion at Mountain View High School, full-ride University of Arkansas track and field athlete, and represented Team USA in the 2008 Olympics. All this was made possible by a well-rounded education I received here in Mesa. I developed a love for the biomedical sciences and am currently in med school to be a doctor. When we talk about instructional time, like in the survey, I urge the board to remember specials are instruction. They teach creativity, literacy, health, and critical thinking, the skills that make students adaptable, engaged, and successful in any field. I urge the district to revise this plan and engage families and teachers in genuine dialogue. Protect our specials.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name's Paul LaGrego. During last month's meeting, a future school calendar was proposed. The calendar showed the school year beginning in July, ending in May, with a number of one- and two-week breaks throughout the year. and two-week breaks throughout the year. I was left with some questions from the perspective of a taxpayer, a parent, and a student. From the perspective of a taxpayer, why are we holding class and cooling eighty-plus schools during the hottest time of the year? Are residential power bills the highest always during July and August? Why not start school, start school in September? And it would be less costly, helpfully reducing the same carbon imprint that the children are taught to reduce. From the perspective of a parent, during last month's meeting, there was a concern about a drop of enrollment in Mesa Public Schools. Since August is the most hot, miserable, humid month of the year, parents would like to get the family out of the valley to the coolness of mountains or the seashore during that time and not be stuck in the heat due to the start of school. From the perspective of a student, the purpose of education is to make capable adults. Being a student is a job that requires work and concentration. A school year with many breaks adversely affects momentum in learning. I would hope that the powers of influence within the Mesa School District may consider adjusting a class, school class calendar in a way to save energy costs, give families an opportunity to beat the August heat, and to improve student learning. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, and community. My name is Lauren Ogil, and I'm here as a proud Mesa parent and community member who deeply believes in the power of education, not just through textbooks and tests, but through creativity, curiosity, and connection. I want to speak tonight about two cornerstones of that vision: libraries and the arts. Our libraries are not just rooms with books. They are gateways to possibility. They teach students how to explore, question, and think for themselves. In a world flooded with information, libraries help students learn how to discern truth from noise. They are safe spaces for kids who might not have access to books, technology, or even a quiet spot in their homes. A librarian is often the first person to show a child that reading is a way to understand themselves and the world. That spark once lit never goes out. I will highlight my beautiful daughter in this moment. Our amazing librarians at her school, Red Mountain Ranch, encouraged this, and due to that, she went to the district and regional Battle of the Books last year. The arts, too, are not extras. I don't know why they're called specials. They're essentials. Everything in this meeting prior to this, and I'm absolutely here, was about how important band, music, art is to these kids. And it gives them voices when sometimes words don't fail them as far as reading. They build confidence, empathy, and innovation, and the various skills our students need for the future workforce. I've been involved with art masterpieces myself, and I also cannot stress enough how important our librarians and our specials are to these kids. And I really hope that this parent survey-
Aloha, Ms. President, and to the rest of the school board. I would like to talk about Sequoia and about the deaf and hard-of-hearing school here in Mesa, and shame on you, Tom Horn. The ESA vouchers were only for private schools and charter schools, and also, the principal that ran the school to shut down was awful. So I hope you guys hire the best people to run this school and always support DI no matter what school is in Mesa Public School system. I also ask, you put a T-coil on the Mesa board so people with hearing aids can hear you guys speak through our devices. I ask if you guys hold big events for public schools here that you always have a sign language interpreter, no matter if someone is there or not. And you should always have reserved spots to sit for ASL interpretation for the community. I also ask that you guys make that a whole new building for Sequoia. To be awesome to make a newly fresh building for Sequoia Deaf School and a new website for them. Mahalo and thank you for listening to me tonight.
Good evening, governing board.
Vanessa, will you pull your mic down? Sorry.
I know, I'm short.
You're good, thank you. We just want to make sure we hear you.
Okay. We good? Okay. Vanessa Mayberry. I did not plan to speak, so this is not a formally-written speech. Good evening, governing board and superintendency. Thank you for your time. I come to you as a community member, parent, MPS graduate, actually generations have graduated from MPS, former MPS teacher and librarian to speak on behalf of our libraries. I know you are faced with difficult decisions about what current MPS programs to continue to support, which is no small feat. So I ask why you're making your decision to please consider what all the libraries provide for our students. As you know, reading scores across Arizona have fallen, where once students who read below grade level in the classroom comprised of only a few, they are now the majority. Our teachers are doing all that they can to increase reading levels, but it isn't enough to combat this crisis. They can't do it alone. This is where our libraries come into play. Our libraries provide things our classrooms cannot. They provide students a level of wide collection of books to read that a classroom simply cannot hold. They promote a love of reading and turn students who would have never picked up a book into lifelong readers. In time where reading skills are declining, our libraries are just what we need to help tackle this crisis. Thank you.
My name is Carissa Routsong, and I'm a parent of four children in the Mesa District and also work as a substitute in the district. I have an eighth grader that currently attends Shepherd Junior High. I'm here tonight to express my strong support for the proposal to expand Shepherd into a high school. This would be a great option for students like my son who thrive in smaller, more focused learning environments. He's academically driven and, like many students, participates in sports and other activities outside of school. Many of Mesa's existing high schools are quite large and can feel overwhelming. This new option would create a pathway for students to excel academically without getting lost in the size and pace of a larger high school. It could also help create strong student-teacher relationships and more personal education experience. Over the past several years, many families in our community have chosen charter schools for this very reason: smaller campuses, strong academics, and closer connections between students and teachers. While those are great qualities, but there's no reason Mesa Public Schools can't offer the same experience within the district. By expanding Shepherd into a high school, we can give families the best of both worlds: the individualized environment they want and the resources, stability, and community spirit that come with a public school system. It also gives families another compelling reason to stay in the district and better serve students who might otherwise look outside the district to meet their needs. This proposal helps keep students and valuable funding within the Mesa Public Schools while serving a broader range of learning needs. The high school wouldn't replace the traditional model. It would complement it. Expanding choice strengthens the district and supports families. I truly feel having this high school would fill a-
Our final speakers will be Stacy Coleman and Melissa Lindblom, and then another call for Carlos Fernandez. If you did sign up to speak on an action item, this is the time when you will be speaking, so as part of a public comment. Stacy Coleman, Melissa Lindblom, and then Carlos Fernandez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stacy Yvonne Coleman, and I'm here dedicating my time and energy to, on behalf of my daughter, Yvona Renee Smith, who is here with me this evening. And on her behalf, I would like to say that on September nineteenth, my daughter, a black junior high student, was struck and called a racial and gendered slur: "A black bitch." She reported it immediately. I personally informed Principal Michael Dennigan of Summit Junior High Academy and Area Superintendent Arlinda Mann that both the physical contact and the slur occurred. Yet, neither element was included in the school's report, and the incident has not been classified as harassment. That omission matters. When a child is targeted for her race and gender, it is not simple misconduct. It is a civil rights violation. I am asking the district three things: reclassify this incident as harassment, consistent with policy and law; acknowledge in writing the full scope of what occurred; and thirdly, review policies and training so administrators can accurately recognize and respond to bias-based incidents. This request comes from a place of love and commitment, not confrontation. My daughter's experience, like any student, deserves to be seen, named, and addressed with integrity and dignity. By doing so, this district shows every child that Mesa Public Schools stands for safety, dignity, and equity in both word and action. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Lindblom. I am proud to be a product of Mesa Public Schools and even more proud that I now have five of my own children in the district also. My husband and I currently have all five of our kids at Barbara Bush Elementary. The school is small but mighty, and the teachers, staff, and community have felt like family to us over the years. It is for the same reason that despite being in Stapley Junior High boundaries, our oldest is choosing to go to Shepherd Junior High next year, and we couldn't be more thrilled. We love that it is smaller than Stapley, and we are excited to be involved in the community surrounding Shepherd that we've already grown to love. Even more thrilling to us is the prospect of our children being able to remain at Shepherd for high school, as Shepherd College Prep potentially opens its doors. To have our kids remain in a school and on a campus that is familiar while also being with other students that are academically-minded is truly the best-case scenario for us. As anyone that has raised or worked around children understands, all children are wildly individual and different. In our own family, we have a very wide range of children, one from the nerdiest of nerds to the most social of butterflies, and also a child with autism that struggles with his social skills. I think that being in a small school and looking at each of their individual needs, an academic high school with fewer teachers, staff, and students that can better know and understand our children seems like it would be a great fit for each of these. For that reason, I'd encourage you to vote to-
Madam President, that concludes our public comment for tonight.
Thank you. We'll now move into review of the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are approved with one vote with no discussion. If a board member would like to pull a consent agenda item, please do so now. All right, thank you, members. None are pulled. We'll now move into- Our personnel request. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry, one second. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel request? Including the addendum?
So moved.
I'm sorry, I'm having some technical difficulty. One second, I'm going to restart this. One second. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel request including the addendum and the new certified twelve-month salary schedule for organization redesign?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Board members, any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I have some questions. My questions are on the addendum. I believe these were posted Monday night. Is that correct?
No, it was yesterday afternoon. Typically, the-
The addendum was posted yesterday afternoon-
Yeah.
-along with the salary changes.
The salary schedules was also included.
Right, okay. All right. I have, I basically have two questions. How does the board know that the services provided by each of the positions that are being eliminated will not be eliminated? And secondly, by some of these positions being eliminated, how can you assure the board that we are able to serve students by strength and need?
Dr. Esos and Ms. Mesa were in charge of the team that collaborated together to develop all the reorganization designs that are going to, you know, take us from one hundred and seventy centralized support staff across student services and teaching and learning to one hundred and thirty. In that process, we had a lengthy review of submitting, from both an administrative perspective, this started last spring, what jobs, responsibilities, and duties that members of departments were accomplishing. We then went through an extensive process of collecting data and information from every employee in a professional description questionnaire. It's a SHRM practice, S.A.R.Y., Society of Human Resource Management, where we got what duties that those employees accomplished. We then also looked at their current job descriptions and reviewed their current job descriptions. And then the team of executive directors and two directors, along with Ms. Mesa and Dr. Esos, were tasked with developing new job descriptions where exactly what you just talked about would not occur, where a level of service to students, where living into the Mesa portrait and promise could come to fruition. We think in a regional model where you have people that are in closer proximity to the actual school level, you know, point of delivery and education, we think we're going to be able to maximize the opportunity to help provide support to principals, teachers, support staff on campuses so that we can be ready and active when we need to in the Dobson Region Learning Community, sorry, Westwood Learning Community, Mountain View Learning Community. And I will be honest with you, there are some things that when we found they were not legally required by federal statute, they were not required by state statute, they're not required by our governing board policy, and we had to evaluate whether those tasks needed to continue to be accomplished. If they're not student-facing and we're just completing a task to complete a task because it was created, you know, in the historical purview of the district, then we empowered our directors and executive directors to examine those tasks and say, "It doesn't affect students. It doesn't affect our delivery model to schools." And guess what? In the end, we, this is a task we have to eliminate. That's because as you're downsizing and expecting people to do more, you also have to always reexamine what you're currently doing and say, "Hey, how can we take away things?" It's the classic dilemma of a teacher. I taught for thirteen years. Classic dilemma of a teacher. You gave me more. What are you taking off my plate in order for me to be successful with kids? Right? It's all about the students when it boils down to it. So that's the exact task they went through. These were developed collaboratively across those fourteen leaders, as well as feedback loops with people outside of that group. And I'll defer to Dr. Esos to talk a little bit more specifically at this time.
Madam President, members of the board, yes. Our team looked at every single PDQ, used tools to ensure that they were cross-referencing all of those responsibilities, the administrative tasks, the compliance requirements to ADE and the federal government. In many cases, if they had questions, they reached out to some of the coaches or specialists if they were in, you know, different departments and those kinds of things, and then collaborated together to put all of those pieces together while also remaining fiscally responsible and getting to the goal that we were tasked with. So there was a lot of work that was thoughtful and put into really ensuring that we could provide the best supports to our schools in this new model. And I do think that when you start to understand it a little bit better, you'll see that it really, truly is a model of collaboration and building capacity as well as pathways for our staff to grow into as they continue their work in supporting our students and our schools.
Excuse me, I totally get the rationale, but I'm seeing positions that serve students and serve our community that have been eliminated, like the Director of Community Partnerships. Being in the community on a number of boards, I know what that job does, but yet I do not see in the ad on the table of organization a similar position. So I can't be assured that something that I know is valuable to the community is going to be a service that we are still going to maintain. Another example would be a preschool, a special ed itinerant teacher who serves the Salt River Indian community. I don't know by getting this just yesterday where those students are going to be served. And I have a hard time voting on something when I don't know if the services that were provided by the positions that are being eliminated are still going to be provided to kids.
Member Hutchinson, thanks for referencing those two jobs first. And I think I'm speaking correctly here. Yeah, we're living in a state right now where we're moving quickly because we want these to be closed out by December. And the two that you just brought up are actually things that we've been very privileged to be working with our employees on. And in terms of eliminating the Director of Community Partnerships position, there's a development of that position in a non-administrative role because that staff member has- a development of that position in a non-administrative role because that staff member has no staff that report to that person, so it's really not administrative. It's really a coordinator-type position. And that position, I don't know if it made this Personnel Action item. I think it's going to make November 13th Personnel Action item. We just received the 12% Gaming Grant from SRPMIC. They've been longstanding partners of Mesa Public Schools. And so we were at their breakfast on Monday morning, and that grant is actually what supports that position. So I think Mr. Moore and Mr. Wang, if you want to take over for a second on this one, are working on that job description, and that'll be something in November 13th Personnel section.
Member Hutchinson, Governing Board, Superintendent Audience, the position you referred to, the director position, we will be making a recommendation to add a position in November to the Governing Board. That position doesn't fall within the academics, those five areas, or six areas, excuse me, specialized services, academics, rather, it'll be housed under Business Services, hence why it wasn't on this Table of Work. But it will be in November.
Second, one is the itinerant teacher and preschool itinerant job. The Head Start IGA with SRPMIC is of value to us. We thoroughly believe in preschool education. We talked to you earlier tonight about the financial difficulties with running preschool education in a public school system where we're not funded even beyond kindergarten. Like kindergarten's funded half-day, preschool's funded even less. And so to design proper preschool systems, we appreciate the federal government designing systems like Head Start, implementing those in communities. And then we provide support through that IGA agreement back. With the preschool itinerant job, what we've learned is the job duties and functionalities of that job were really not aligned with the job title. I'll give you an example of that. That job included coverage for FMLA that came from a preschool itinerant teacher themselves. And we don't have jobs in hardly any districts in the state that are on Mesa Public Schools. We don't have teaching jobs that centralize so that when someone goes on FMLA, we go cover that class. That's not something districts can afford on state funding. And so we're re-envisioning that teaching job. Those teaching jobs will be preschool teaching jobs. There will likely be school-based teaching jobs. So you can imagine with the SRPMIC community, a school-based teaching job maybe in the Lehigh region that runs with preschool, with the Lehigh preschool, and then also contributes to going off into the SRPMIC community to help with Head Start. So we're working through those things. And that job, I think, we pulled that job off the deletion table because we're continuing to work through how to get a teaching job back into, because that's really what it ends up being, back into a teaching category. We actually found out we were even function coding that thing, not correct, function code, sorry, function code of 1,000 is a teaching function code, and that person, these people were primarily functioning in teaching roles. And so they were coded into a 2,200 function code, which is like a support services function code as opposed to an instructional code. So we're working on that, and those services will be provided, and that's why we removed them to last minute. Mr. Wang, did I overstep at all?
Yeah, just to clarify, because I've communicated with a few of them. For clarification, some of our teacher roles are coded to a department rather than a school. And so they won't be under the department umbrella in the future, they'll be coded to a school umbrella. But we did remove them from this recommendation, just for clarity, because I understand, we don't typically bring a teacher, a new teacher at a school to the board for approval. Like if a third grade is over class size, we provide a third-grade teacher to them. So we remove it from a department, but we typically don't add for a school based on the Table of Work. So we removed it to avoid the confusion. So they'll be coded to a school next year.
Board members, any other? Mrs. Benson?
Thank you, Madam President. So I just want to say, I really appreciate all of the work that has gone into the reorganization, and it is the reality of a declining enrollment district. We've got to make, we've got to tighten our, I don't remember the phrase now, but tighten our belt, so to speak. We've got to be able to do more with less, and we cannot just require that of our building people. It has got to also come from middle management and administration. You have to lead by example. If we want our classroom teachers and our principals to do more with less, then we should be doing it at the district level as well. I do actually see the benefit to, and I understood the deletions to be in the columns that were falling under the purview of the Chief of Schools and Chief of Academics. So I appreciate the hard work that has gone into this. It cannot be easy, and especially within the short time period in which you guys have been trying to put everything together. Because we are not rolling it all out in one big fell swoop, that is perhaps the place where some miscommunication then becomes part of the vernacular, so to speak. We look at a document and we go, "Wait, wait, wait, what happened to..." So I appreciate the transparency, I really appreciate the hard work, because this is our reality until we can actively... My hope, honestly, with our regionals, our regional lineups, is that we begin to redefine what Mesa Public Schools is, and we get our community to say, "Well, wait a minute, I want to go back there. I don't want to have to go to a charter school." I like what Mesa's now doing with different options and moving forward and meeting the needs of parents and students. And I think the regional model in particular, I think, is going to be very beneficial. So that's all I wanted to say. I do appreciate you answering Mrs. Hutchinson's question so that it is clear, because there are more positions that are not within the Director of Academics, or Executive Director, pardon me, of academics in schools. There is a separate grid and sheet, right? So I appreciate the, and I look forward to continuing this process, because it's not easy.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson. Mrs. Walden?
Yeah, so thank you for the clarifying explanations. I was going to ask about the itinerant roles as well, and I appreciate the questions that we got from Board Member Hutchinson. I just want to add that I'm excited at the redesign, because I think that what we're finding in this redesign, especially with the three-tier pay grade, is that there's more career pathing in education. And I think that Mesa can become a district where we do attract new teachers and people into the industry when there's more options for them to be able to advance in their career or find different ways to use their talents and skills in the district. And I really want to just give you a thank you for the special consideration and focus on changing roles that will give us more classroom support and have that focus on student outcomes and making those things their priority. I think that has been really excellent in this redesign.
Thank you. Mrs. Walden, Mrs. Chaffee?
Mr. Wang, can you help me understand the need for the three-tiered certified pay grade?
Certainly, kind of mirrors the administrator ones the Governing Board approved last school year. As we reduce administrator FTE, some responsibilities will be along with the certified positions. And so you may have a 12-month certified position supervise a couple other 12-month certified specialists. And so if they're all on the same pay grade, there, hence the dilemma, plus if that lead individual were to win the Powerball and leave, what's the incentive for somebody else to grow into that? And I remember Walden kind of shared some of the rationale with the leadership pathways. That was part of our, one of our rationales back in July or August when we shared this redesign with the Governing Board and the public, was we did it with meaning and purpose. And there are many of them, I'm not going to go to all or all of them, but one of them was that leadership capacity building and also pathway potential as well. And the ranges are, quite honestly, are very minimal, but it gets us to start.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions? I appreciate the questions and input, and thank you, Dr. Strong, Mr. Wang, for your information. I think it is a hard thing when we look at, we're removing these jobs, and we're not quite sure exactly how everything's going to land, and it is a difficult time right now. But we'll move forward and keep things going and do the best that we can as we lean into this day in education. So with that-
Madam President, may I make one more comment? So, you know, historically, education is not, from my perspective and the years that I've been involved, it's not been focused on a business model. But education really is a business, right? And so we have money come in, we have money go out. We've got to be able to do that as efficiently and effectively as possible. And our main priority, our main product, if you will, is equality education for the students that attend our schools and that graduate. That's what our community wants, is qualified, qualified future citizens that will, if actually 85% of them stay in Mesa, I would assume Mesa really wants to have quality citizens when they graduate from our schools. So this is a step in that direction. We've got to be able to work effectively and efficiently. That's what the business culture requires. That's what education needs to do as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Hutchinson?
I appreciate the discussion amongst my colleagues and appreciate the comments. And thank you, Superintendency, for providing information. My reluctance is getting so much at such a late time. And this board is used to getting thorough information so that we can make informed decisions. And I would, I know that there is a, because of the schedule that we have and the school year that we have, that we do have to make some quick decisions. But I would appreciate more information when we are making decisions of this magnitude in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Ms. Kirby, I think we're ready to take our vote. With a vote of five yeas, you have approved the Personnel Request, including the addendum and the new certified 12-month salary schedule for organizational redesign. We now move into our consent agenda. All items will be considered as a group and will be approved with one motion. If a board member would like to spotlight or comment on a consent agenda item, please do so after the vote. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda according to the recommended action for each item?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Ms. Kirby, will you please take our vote? With a vote of five yeas, we have approved the consent agenda items according to the recommended action for each item. Yes. Mrs. Hutchinson?
I want to thank the teachers, Mountain View, Westwood, who are giving our students the opportunity to study abroad and have the tremendous educational opportunities as Model UN students and as music students. Man, would I like to be in the suitcase of the Mountain View Chamber Orchestra as they study British composers in London. This is, it's amazing opportunities. And I also, again, want to thank the community for the many gifts and donations that they have secured for a wide variety of programs in the district. You are helping us meet the needs of our kids, and we appreciate all the efforts of the community, as we did tonight with our AARP Experience Core Volunteers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. We'll now move into our action items. Tonight, we have the PABDEC Chair, Dr. Laura Metcalf, and Vice Chair, Mr. Jacob Martinez, here tonight to present. But since this isn't action item, we'll do a motion and a second first, then hear the presentation, and we'll go from there. And we just want to thank you for being here tonight. So do I have a motion to approve the PABDEC recommended boundary changes?
So moved.
I'll second.
Mrs. Benson has moved. Do I have a second? A second by Mrs. Hutchinson. All right, and we're going to turn the time over to Dr. Metcalf and Mr. Martinez. And we were trying to keep you guys at 10 minutes, and then we'll have time for questions.
Excellent. Madam President, members of the board, administration, and community. I am Dr. Laura Metcalf. I am a proud Westwood graduate, and I'm a 30-year educator in Arizona, along with being the member of the PABDEC Committee for the last 11 years and chairing it for the last seven. I'd like to be able to spend a few moments with you. We are going to go over a recommendation that we have worked very hard on. And I'd also have my, I will do half of the presentation, and Mr. Martinez will round out the second half. This covers a recommendation for the repurposing of Wilson Elementary School, and we look forward to the information and questions that you may have. Next. Oh, I do it. Okay. So much for that. All right.
Do you want me to click? I can hit next if you tell me next.
Because we will be here all night if I have to try and figure this thing out. Thank you. All right, so according to policy... All right. According to policy 5-101 attendance boundaries, the Governing Board authorizes and directs the Superintendent to form a Planning and Boundary Design Advisory Committee, PABDEC, who we are, that will include 11 non-employee members and the Chief of Staff or an ex-officio non-voting member. Each governing member, Board Member will appoint two persons as members of the PABDEC, and we are two of those individuals. Would you like for me to read one and two, or would you rather me not? We only have 10 minutes? Okay, thank you. Next, please. Final recommendation for the Governing Board. The PABDEC takes, will make a recommendation concerning the boundaries of the Governing Board following at least two public hearings, which there were three, to contemplate the changes of a change in a boundary related to one of the public schools here in Mesa Public Schools. The work of the PABDEC is not complete until it brings final recommendation to a vote and submits the results to the Governing Board, which is tonight's purpose. Next. The communication plan to the community. Mailers to homes within the school boundaries were provided. All schools were impacted by boundary changes. Over 31,000 items were successfully delivered, sent to at least 10 days ahead of time prior to the first public hearing, to include a hearing dates and brief explanation of proposed changes. Flyers sent to homes with students impacted by the boundary changes. Parent square and text invitations to public hearings were provided, all sent to parents of students enrolled in each, for each hearing. And an informational webpage launch was also provided to the community to review the information, to help inform parents and answer frequently asked questions, to include detailed overview information of proposed plan and regularly updated. Three public hearings took place, one at Wilson Elementary School on September 3rd at 5:00 p.m., Johnson Elementary School September 9th at 5:00 p.m., and Madison Elementary on September 10th at 5:00 p.m. Next. So what I'll do is I'll read this one, and then I will turn it over to Jacob. So the community concerns that were derived from these meetings included some community members did not want to lose Wilson as a community school. What will happen to the staff currently at Wilson, and how will transportation be decided?
But even with those, we were fortunate to receive a lot of feedback from parents and community members of people that were excited and eager for this change to happen. Some of those, you see it right there, people were excited about the increased enrollment and getting more students at their home schools that they're currently at. Like Dr. Metcalf mentioned, we visited all the schools that would be impacted by this decision. And so there are a lot of families that were excited to welcome new people into their school families. Additionally, there were many families that were excited at the prospect of the expanded Franklin programming. They had an opportunity to hear from the principal for Franklin at Brimhall, as well as hear about the prospect for Franklin going forward. And so there was a lot of positive reactions and feedback for that. And then to round that out, just the ability to, you know, consolidate and really tackle things the best way that Mesa Public Schools can, it's something we have to do in the time we're in right now. And so I think community and family members are excited about doing everything Mesa Public Schools can to make sure that we have the strongest vote going forward. So some of the considerations that PABDEC took and received to move forward on this plan was, a big part was the enrollment. All of the schools in that area are currently seeing decreased enrollment, with Wilson being the most significant at 40%, at a rate of 40%. Additionally, there is a strong interest from the community and from families- Additionally, there is a strong interest from the community and from families to have that expanded Franklin model. And so for this ability, for this plan to go forward and allow for something like that to take place and allow the capacity for it, that was a big consideration that was taken into account. And then finally, a significant amount of students that are in that Wilson boundaries are either going to other districts or are going to Franklin schools. And so this is an opportunity to, like the last slide mentioned, be the most efficient. And that was a significant consideration that PABDEC took. So how did we get to tonight? Well, on August 18, the PABDEC Board met and decided to move forward with the recommended boundary change. That prompted the public hearings that Dr. Metcalf mentioned at the schools that would be impacted. After going to those meetings, having listening sessions with the community, the Board on September 25 decided to move forward with the recommendation and bring the proposal to the governing board. And so one of the previous slides held, you had this and the last one. This is the proposed boundaries for those three schools that PABDEC is recommending. If you remember from a few slides back, the lines were a little bit configured oddly. People were cutting across roads. It might not have made the sense efficiency-wise. And so what this new proposal does is kind of bring it all together, consolidates it, and allows for the new exciting opportunities here in the district. So the PABDEC Board is excited to bring it to you tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Metcalf and Mr. Martinez. I'll start with Board Member Hutchinson. Any questions, comments?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Martinez mentioned a strong interest. Is there data to support this change that will actually attract more students/families to this campus? And the second question I have is, how much will it cost to transform the current traditional Wilson campus into a Franklin campus?
Yeah. So, just for clarification, this is where it gets a little tricky with these four action items, back-to-back-to-back, right? I'm more than willing to answer those. Those are probably more related to Agenda Item B and C. But, you know, to vote on, this work, this work gets really tricky, because to vote on this also intertwines everything. So let me just respond briefly, because this is about, this item's about boundaries, right? The next item's about the grade configurations and renaming. So we've allocated each of the schools that are being repurposed $75,000 of redesign money. That's out of the capital allocation budget, not the M&amp;O allocation budget. So I want to be really clear. M&amp;O is where we pay salaries and benefits to people. That's declining enrollment stuff. It's hitting us in Mesa Public Schools to the tune of about 2,500 students this year, and we try to protect the M&amp;O bucket as much as we possibly can, because that's how we pay people, and we really want to value paying people. So this is out of the capital budget, and a capital budget had to carry forward last year. And so they've been giving this budget by Mr. Moore and his department. We have tight controls. This is about a quarter of the amount that we gave Red Mountain Ranch, K-Stem Academy at Red Mountain Ranch, when we redesigned K-Stem Academy. So we're being very thoughtful about the approach from a financial perspective, and so that's the first one.
I'm sorry, is that, when you said each school, is that Madison and Jefferson?
No.
No.
That is Shepherd. I, sorry, I should, yes, that's a very good clarifying question. That is Shepherd, and that is Franklin-Wilson.
And Franklin High.
So Shepherd, Franklin-Wilson, Franklin High.
Thank you. Thank you for clarification.
And then we'll work with, as with any current school, we're always working on their capital needs at their campus as well. And we've gotten some unique requests in from a couple of the schools that are ingesting some kids, and we will consider those requests as they see fit and fit underneath the capital budget. So we understand that there will be some needs at the schools that are ingesting kids, but we haven't allocated a budget. They'll have to go through the process of requesting budget like they normally would in any given year, because we're not doing anything new at those schools. They just may need a few extra resources here and there. We empower the principals to work with Mr. Moore in that process. The other question was centered around data.
Mr. Martinez mentioned the strong interest, and which, because the strong interest is actually the reason for the boundary changes.
Yeah. So let's, I want to be really careful here, because some of the image from the public is that the parents that came on behalf of Franklin High School last year, that's really where this all started. Last year, in the process of redesigning college and career academies, parents reached out to us a variety of times, wanting a traditional learning experience at the high school level, a more traditional learning experience at the high school level. And so in that process, we as a cabinet started going, okay, what are solution sets for that? In reality, then, Wilson parents here were having to be redesigned because Franklin High School wanted that. And that's a difficult conversation, and the reason that's a difficult conversation is because we knew, and we know, in quite a few of our schools throughout Mesa Public Schools, we have options, and the options are to either think strategically and creatively, or we're probably going to be moving to school closure within the next three to five years. And Wilson's one of those schools that used to have 1,000 kids on their campus, and now is sitting close to 340 to 360 kids, depending on the day, and have had 40% declining enrollment over the course of the last four years. And so I don't, I don't want people to think we're doing this to Wilson because of the Franklin thing, because I don't want a war between Franklin parents and Wilson parents. The fact of matter is, we were going to have to do something at Wilson in order to live into the next generation. Now, in terms of demand, it started at, it started at the Franklin parents showing up, and then we surveyed. And it's one of the higher net promoter scores we've seen in parent data. It had a net promoter score of 42 out of the parent survey, and I think we had over 300 responses to that parent survey. And we think that demand is telling us that. And then we've had significant parent feedback loops through the Franklin Brimhall principal back there, Mr. Abrams, and he has those qualitative stories of parents willing to show up for 9th grade. In fact, the demand is to the point where we're not sure, we might not open 9th and 10th grade, which is why the item later on in this meeting is flexible to do that. So we might even have to open 9th and 10th grade if it fits the needs at that campus. So those are a couple of the data points. And Mr. Abrams, if you want to come up and talk about any qualitative data, feel free You want to wait? Mr. Abrams, the Board's deciding they'll wait till Agenda Item C, because it's probably a little more.
You're on deck. Yeah, just be closer. You're on deck.
Matter of fact, if Ms. Benson wants to come be on deck too, because that'll be rather quickly.
Then I won't cut into the timer. Just kidding. Mrs. Hutchinson, any other questions? Okay. Mrs. Benson?
First off, I would like to thank you for your commitment to doing the work of PABDEC, especially Dr. Metcalf, if you've been here 11 years. That's amazing. You're like the GOAT, I assume. The GOAT, greatest of all time. I just signed that a couple of years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you for defining that.
Well, it's because we're post-middle-aged. I had to learn that as well. My kids were calling people the GOAT, and I'm like, that is so rude. Okay, so I just have a quick question. I know I've gotten several emails, I assume the rest of the Board has as well, concerns from current Wilson families about transportation, also about whether or not the needs of the current Wilson neighborhood are going to be met if they do decide to go into the Wilson, or Franklin at Wilson. So I'd like that addressed a little bit. But then the second, I do like the clean configuration of the boundary changes, but I do see, oh, it's Johnson. Johnson is significantly smaller, so our, I mean, at least, it looks to me, geographically, the boundary is significantly smaller, based on the color coding. So is the student population within each one of these three relatively close? I mean, because Madison looks huge.
The answer to that question is, the student population from Wilson was not equally divided across the three schools. Why would you do that? You'd do that because Wilson and Madison are much closer in proximity to each other, and to service the Wilson families in the neighborhood around the school, you want to help those families out as much as you can and move them over to Wilson. The one thing I'll tell you is that Johnson boundary is a little more density to that Johnson boundary than there are some single-family homes in that Madison region and that Wilson region, so that also comes into play as well. But I just want to be clear, it is not an equal distribution, and I think Jefferson receives the least amount of kids out of that re-boundary, if I remember my data correctly.
Correct. And just, excuse me, Member Benson, Johnson currently has more students enrolled than Madison. So sometimes the area looks small, but there's a higher population of students within that area than others.
Okay, thank you. And there are several questions. I know that they were, that you had a website that they could, that people could shoot their questions to you. Are the answers to those questions still up and available to the community if they, if they want to look and see? All right, and then.
Yes.
And I think the questions, the other questions that I have, I think are more appropriate to the, it is hard when the next two are contingent, yeah. So I'm just going to leave it with that, but I do appreciate all the hard work that this committee had to go through. You spent hours listening to people, and that was awesome. So, thank you very much.
Are you giving, oh, gotcha. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Benson. Mrs. Walden?
Yeah, I, we did get some emails, and I just wanted to clarify that the parents that were at Franklin were informed of the public hearing meetings, because there was, seems like there's some parents that were just confused or wasn't sure that the changes impacted them. Can anyone speak to how the meetings were communicated?
Yeah.
So we did not hold a hearing at Franklin, because the boundaries weren't not going to affect that school. However, we held, Mr. Abrams and I held a listening session at Franklin at Brimhall, and we held a specific session for K6 parents, and then another session for 7th and 8th grade parents. So they had an opportunity to ask questions, they saw the presentations that were given at PABDEC, and so that's how they were informed.
And I'm assuming then that was communicated to all the parents enrolled at Franklin, so they had the chance to be notified and go?
Yes. All of the Franklin principals were actually present when we did that listening session, and they also communicated with their families that it was happening.
Right. Thank you. That's my question.
Thank you. Mrs. Joffe?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, will the students living in the current Wilson boundary be guaranteed a spot at the new Franklin Academy? And/or will they be bused to one of the three new schools based on their distance and our established busing distances currently?
Question one. The reason a later item talks about possibly opening K4 and not K5, although we want to remain flexible in that if enrollment doesn't hit where we think, we know in the long run, Wilson could be a K6. So the reason it's K4 out of the gate is to keep enough space for all Wilson kids if they want to continue to learn at Wilson. Of course, that'll be in the Franklin traditional model, Franklin Accelerated model. So the answer to that first question is yes, there is enough space to keep all those students on that campus. Second question, transportation routes will be derived within the Wilson community as well, to get them to Madison and/or Jefferson-Johnson, and so there will be bus stops in the area to get the kids across that major, those major roads.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Members, for questions and insight. And thank you again for, to Dr. Metcalf and Mr. Martinez for serving and for your information and being at these listening sessions and these meetings. As with anything, change is hard, and especially these Wilson families that, that's been their neighborhood school, and we know how difficult that is, as we all are, many of us have kids in school and our neighborhood schools, and we know that change is hard. And so we have kept that in mind as we thoughtfully made these changes and as we lean into this new day and age of education. So I don't see any other questions. I think we're ready to vote. Ms. Kirby, if you'll please take our vote. With a vote of five yeas, we have approved, I'm so sorry, I got to the wrong page. We have approved the, I'm, tonight, I think I should start over. With a vote of five yeas, we have approved the PABDEC recommended boundary changes. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank all the volunteers on the committee. It's, it was a real labor of love. Thank you so much for your time. PABDEC oftentimes gets to sit out for a semester or a year, but you did above and beyond, and you did an excellent job to get a consensus of 10-0 on a recommendation, shows the hard work that was done by the district and by the volunteers, the community. So thank you very much, Dr. Metcalf. Thank you very much, Mr. Martinez. And if you would take the Board's thanks back, thanks back to the members who were so diligent and serving, we very much appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. A big round of applause. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to make sure I'm in the right spot, that my computer and my papers match. I'm sorry. We are now into Action Item B. Do I have a motion to approve of designating the school at 5619 East Gleyat Avenue, Mesa, Arizona, 85206, a choice school named Franklin Accelerated Academy, Wilson Campus, with grade levels of preschool through 6th, beginning in the 2026-27 school year, with the intent to enroll students in grades kindergarten through 4th, to begin in the 2026-27 school year?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll start with Board Member Hutchinson.
I have one question. The Franklin model is said to improve student outcomes and enhance program delivery. Can you explain basically what makes a Franklin Accelerated Academy school different from other MPS elementary schools?
Member Hutchinson? Yeah, here's what I'll do. I'll tell you from my perspective. I have been in the district two and a half years, almost three now, and then we have some Franklin people who may come up and tell them from your perspective. So what I think's unique is there's always, science of reading's starting to take off throughout the nation, right? The Mississippi miracles being noted about, and the Steubenville miracle, if you know Steubenville, Ohio, and go read them, about them, and how they've implemented prosity back into the learning process. Prosity is a way that the spoken word happens, and we know kids that are good with the spoken word are also good with reading words and writing words. And I will tell you the Spalding methodology, the approach to literacy, the approach to ensuring that kids get the science of reading is really important in improving outcomes for kids. I will tell you that in the Franklin classrooms I've seen, there's practice that occurs on a nightly basis with kids, and that's really important, and that speaks to the home-parent relationship. They have homework protocols and policies that they follow with parent agreement, and that's really important. And the reason that's important is because of the cyclical and spiraled learning process that traditionally occurs in accelerated, in traditional academies. And cyclical and spiraled aligns with cognitive load theory, and that is the fact that what you want kids to do in the learning process is you want them to be able to be fluent enough. The whole point of the science of reading and phonics is to never use phonics again, because the second you know phonics and you have it fluent, you can read. And so the same thing in mathematics, right? The balance between conceptual understanding and procedural fluency. The second you're fluent, guess what? Now you can actually start to do other conceptual understanding items. And that really aligns, in my opinion, with what I've seen in the several Franklin classrooms that I've been in throughout Mesa Public Schools. So that's my non-expertise portion of it. If any of the real experts want to get up and talk about it, I'm fine with it.
Sure. Dr. Strom hit most all topics. I think some of the other things that are unique are the resources that are used are different than you'd find at neighborhood schools. The Spalding method, our math overviews are driven by standards that teachers teach, not necessarily the resource that is used, and when you align the best resource to meet the needs for whatever goal for that day is. All the teachers in each grade level follow the same overviews the same day, the same week. So if you go from one kinder room to another kinder room to another kinder room continuously, you're going to see them teaching and picking up where the other room left off. If you go from Franklin Brim Hall to Franklin East to Franklin Jordan on, from a Monday to a Tuesday, you're going to see those grade levels picking up the same spot at the same time. So there's consistency that is so precise, and it prevents any kind of gaps from students from one classroom teacher to another classroom teacher, from one grade level to another grade level that goes through. Our, our parents go through an orientation process, so they, they know about the Franklin program. They observe for two hours. They watch the video, they meet with one of the principals to learn more about the program, where we go over all of those key partnerships between home and school, and what, what their responsibility is in that partnership that really makes it powerful between the, the school and home. So there's a lot of pieces that go into it, the structure of the classroom, individual accountability, the dress code, the scheduling, the master scheduling, the specials, band, orchestra, the events that we have, the protected classroom time, limited field trips, limited assemblies, things that are spread out. So what am I missing? Homework four nights a week, how we do it, it's not graded for an individual grade, it's graded for completion to the best of their ability to, teachers to be able to assess understanding and improve on, but doing your homework is a non-negotiable. How we walk in a line, how we sit in the cafeteria, I mean, down to every procedure on the campus, it's, it's down to the detail and high expectations across the board. Levels of discipline across the school level, some individual classroom, you know, PBIS type of reward systems, but really it's more of high expectations and, and clarity with parents. They know from each grade level what the expectations are for students behaviorally and what the outcomes are going to be behaviorally for those students. What else am I missing, ladies? These are my brains here, they, they, intrinsic motivation, yeah, so that's a great word, too. So yeah, the students, they're, they're, the biggest, the biggest award they receive is a quality education and a positive learning environment with supportive teachers, which makes them want to learn more, and that, that ability and, and that happening is the best reward that you can give a student, even though they do earn little grabbers here and there. Am I missing anything else? A great supporting administrative staff as well.
I think she gave you like a mid-rating by that.
Vital to a well-run principals council, they are the best, for sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mrs. Benson?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions that we've received from parents. Because of the nature of the Franklin model and the structure, the, one question was regarding student council. And the fact that student council starts at 4th grade through 6th grade, so how will that be impacted, do you know yet? At, if, if we can only do K-4 initially, how will student council be handled, do you know?
And we've thought about it, and we've started having those conversations. I mean, until there's a final decision, and then eventually the final grade levels, that's going to determine some of those outcomes. And we value the student involvement in, in making our school the best place that it can be, and that's the same thing when you're moving to a different location. Transportation has, has really worked hard on making the times about as seamless as possible for students. So there's the possibility that it could be student council happening on two different campuses, working together. It could be the possibility of students in older grades busing over to Wilson and having student council after school where everyone's together and implementing those different initiatives that they develop, whether it's talking about the campuses, whether it's food drives, whether it's events for assemblies, you know, planning, like this year, planning the Veterans Day assembly. So our student council, you know, they're going to keep moving forward, and I think all of those individual kind of situations, assemblies, what does an assembly look like? What does track and field look like? What do parent volunteers look like? What does before-after-school band look like? So all of those kind of unique one-offs, depending on the final decision of grade levels, and then of course, working closely with the administrator over at that campus is going to be vital in, in kind of what it is. But the, the definitive answer isn't there yet because we're not there yet. But I can tell you the hamster's running non-stop, and I, I shout things out in my car, and my daughter's like, "What's that, Dad?" I'm like, "I was, I was thinking about how we get banned, I was thinking about how we could do elementary band," and I'm talking to myself. So, and the hamster's running in all our, all our heads. So we, we're committed to give every student who's at Franklin at Brim Hall, and that would go to Franklin-Wilson and beyond, the same experience and the same, I think, special experiences, you know, memorable experiences that all of the students currently have at Franklin Brim Hall. So whatever we can do to make that happen, I mean, that's the commitment to do. So student council, band, orchestra, assemblies, field trips, you name it. You know, we have a little mentor club for 6th graders and 3rd graders. How are we going to keep that going? There's a lot of things that happen that people don't even know about that we want to keep going, that's special for those students.
And my hamster's going as well. I'm thinking you could probably use technology as well.
Absolutely.
Like, and do virtual, virtual between your two campuses. My second question is, and there's several that I can forward to you if you want to respond to your community, but my question as a teacher, so Franklin is a totally different culture, right? Do we have a, it's my understanding that principal, when you take over a Franklin school, has to be trained in the Franklin model. Do we have a principal, or are we going to open that up, that is trained in the Franklin model? Just like, like when Soreen became Montessori, Andrea Erickson had to be trained in a, to be a Montessori principal. So do we have that, or are we waiting, a lot of it hinges on whether or not it's approved, right? Because it's silly to do a lot of work to move forward if you don't know if you're moving forward. But in the back of our mind, we already have somebody, as well as teachers, because teachers have to be trained in the Franklin model as well.
Member Benson, Ms. Mesa, Dr. Eses, Ms. Mann have had initial conversations on what administration looks like in this new area, and I will tell you that no matter what we deploy, we're going to be thoughtful about how to deploy administrative services across all elementary schools in the district. We know that we need to expedite if this occurs, we need to expedite the interest process of who may be interested in being the principal of a Franklin-Wilson. We also need to be understanding that we have a really high-quality principal in our opinion right now at Wilson, and we have to garner what the interest is and what our opportunities are for that principal in Mesa Public Schools moving forward. If, if this methodology doesn't necessarily align, this instructional methodology doesn't necessarily align with, with where she's at from a pedagogical point of view, does that make sense to you? You have to have people that buy into the Franklin system to lead Franklin systems and lead Franklin schools. So yes, we've had the initial conversations, and yes, you are correct, we don't want to forward design too much and waste our valuable time, and, because we got a lot of other moving parts going on, but if this action item passes, we will get right to it, and we know we need to expedite processes.
Yeah, just a couple of moving parts, that's it. There's a few. Well, and I think it's really important, like even in the redesign and the people that we're hiring for a variety of different positions, we have to make sure that they, that they are in line with the vision. So at Franklin, whoever we hire as principal and the teachers, if the Wilson teachers there want, it is a different way of teaching. I, I'm a former gifted teacher, so like it wouldn't be my cup of tea. However, I see the value in it, right? But we have to make sure we have people that are in line with the vision and that are not going to undermine what we want to have happen at Wilson in order to feed to Franklin to then seed the high school. And the same in the restructure, as you're, as we're looking at people, we want to make sure they're in line with the vision, and they are not undercutting anything that we're attempting to do, because we're trying to rebuild Mesa and get people back. So, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Ms. Benson, Mrs. Walden.
So Dr. Strom, you mentioned that Wilson has a decline rate of 40%, so they're at 340 now, around that. So we, so we do nothing, then going into next year, do we still expecting to see that large decline? That eventually this is just going to be a school that gets closed? Is that correct?
That would be the consideration of the board. We're, we're committed to try to put the gloves on and fight for all of our schools and Mesa Public Schools for as long as we possibly can. But yeah, I mean, the implication is as you see it, probably.
And then you, you said that, you know, Wilson used to be a much larger school, maybe 1,000. One of the parents emailed me that probably emailed all of you, but Wilson had a max capacity of 500, but I think it, capacity was up to 1,000, right?
Well, there's 29, I can tell you the exact data, there's 29 classrooms on Wilson's campus. You generally can fit 25 to 30 kids, that's on the interior, then we had portables at Wilson as well, and so then you add that on top. So 29 times 30, 870 kids, you had the portables on, you had the portables on top of it, six classrooms at 30, right? If you're going to jam-pack that facility, you can fit a lot. Now, most people will tell you, you don't want a facility running at 100%, you run at 90% or 80%. So, you know, the capacity of a school is somewhat up to debate because of what people desire, but if the facility was full with the portables back in the day, that's why they put portables there, it would have been closer to 800 to 1,000 students.
Member Walden, we did share in our hearings the data that supported, so like 20, 2022, there were 570 students at Wilson, and we just show it every year, and then the projection going to next year, and their 6th grade is the highest right now, so based on our trends, kinder numbers will be lower than the 6th grade, so the trend will continue.
And then are the families that are in the, at Wilson, there were some concerns that they have to volunteer on two committees, or else donate, is that going to continue for these families?
So for all Franklin families, they go through the parent orientation process, then every family signs up for two committees. They can choose to donate and opt-out, but it's two committees that parents sign up for, one school committee and the one Firebird Festival Committee.
So that's going to continue, so the parents that are at Wilson, it's going to be a shift for them if they want to stay, that they have to either basically buy it with time or with money?
That is correct. There's space at Wilson, as long as they meet the expectations and want to meet the expectations of the Franklin model. Otherwise, they would go to what you just approved through the PABDAC recommendation, they would be going to their assigned school based on that reboundry.
And as far as those committees go, we have such a wide variety of committees, they're not all at school. Some are done volunteer at home, some are online, some are just handing something to your student to bring in, and we really work with the parents to find an area of interest to them that helps serve a committee or a need of the school. So when they find joy in it, their students see their parents participating and finding joy, which gets the students excited even more. So we, we pretty much have committees for most every type of family that's out there to help them be welcomed, a part, and appreciated for, for their time.
How many committees are there?
Dozens. So for school committees, probably about two dozen committees, and each committee has dozens and dozens of people on it. And then Firebird Festival Committee is about the same. So like currently, right now, I have about 550 families, so I have 550 parents sign up for committees. And I do have some opt-out. They choose to opt-out, that's, you know, that's okay, too. But yeah, there's everything from copy committees, teacher appreciation, book review, arts, art masterpiece, arts and academics night, you know, track and field, it goes, office committee, on-call committees.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking about families on fixed incomes, single moms, people that, people that work, and so what's the, what's the donation? Is, is there a minimum requirement?
For that, $25.
Okay, and so that's-
That's the opt-out.
That's the opt-out, it's only 25, okay. I mean, it's, that's not my favorite thing, but then closing a school's much worse than asking parents to join a committee or pay $25 to help keep a school open, so. And the other, it sounds like the, the traffic isn't going to be an issue. The, the marquees, because there's things that are sort of in motion right now, and the marquee cost was brought up to me, but I think it's, you know, it's, it's probably not a big cost in the overall grand scheme of things, but because we're unsure of things, I feel like maybe any changes like that might need to be delayed until further into the future. Can someone address that?
Miss Walden, I've been explicitly clear with Mr. Kramer, Ms. Mesa, and Mr. Wang that the marquees at most will be getting a repainting slash reskinning, and we're not going to, where, marquees can get really expensive, is in the digital arena, and the reason digital marquees can get super expensive is not actually because of the marquee, that's pretty expensive, but it's because of the conduit pull from electric and all that stuff that you need to pull out, and that can make the project really expensive. We are not going that route on these campuses, and they have been told that, so there's been direct instruction, we will not be spending money on that, considering our capital position right now.
All right, thank you. And then for the teachers, I know this was brought up, but I'm not entirely clear on it. So the teachers that are currently at Wilson, they may not be in a position to be Franklin teachers, so will you be helping them find other positions or giving them the option to be certified in Spalding?
They're welcome to be considered for openings at, at the Franklin, at Wilson, if approved. We also shared, Human Resources will be in touch with them, depending on today's decision, we'll be in touch with them, giving them some priority interviews for the three schools, Johnson, Madison, and Jefferson schools, if there are openings. We do have an involuntary transfer process, which will be the second step of the process as well. If you recall, the governing board, because this was, this was asked by the Wilson staff when we went and visited, outside the hearings we also attended and met with the staff, one of the questions was about reduction in force. The governing board approved a change in our reduction in force policy, and that does not include doing a RIF because we are changing the purpose of a school. So as long as they don't meet the RIF criteria, they'll be placed in another position, and we always have teacher openings.
Mr. Wang, can I ask some clarifying question, because whenever anyone hears the word RIF, we are still evaluating for 26, 27, based on a declining enrollment of approximately 2,500 kids, whether we'll need a RIF for next year, right? We're hoping that the teacher, retirement, teacher retention ratios may put us in a position where we don't need one, we're evaluating that. And then can I also clarify, these Wilson teachers would, would get the priority interviews, get involuntary transfer, all that stuff, and would be considered just like any other person in the RIF process? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Correct. We're just adding to the RIF story. We're still evaluating, we're waiting for our student enrollment projections and our staffing at all of our school, that, that projection. Last year, unfortunately, we did have to pursue a RIF, a small one, based on the attrition we incurred. So that's always something that's a possibility, but we don't RIF solely because we're changed, we wouldn't RIF solely, Wilson teachers solely because we're making a change to the, the model at that campus. They would be kind of in limbo a little bit. A, getting that priority of those three schools, where those students who are currently attending Wilson, reboundry-wise, will be attending those three schools, and so if there are teacher openings, those students, by the way, will, it'll add the capacity at those three schools, which I think Mr. Martinez shared was some exciting feedback we have. Those three schools, we're excited to get more students within their campuses, which will lead to more teachers being needed on those campuses, so the Wilson teachers will have priority there. But if we were to have to do a RIF, as Mesa Public Schools will be following a RIF policy, and that's really predicated on staff discipline results and evaluation results.
All right, and then just going back real fast to the, to the fee or to the volunteer. If, if you had a parent that was really interested in the Franklin experience, but genuinely felt like they had a situation that they couldn't either pay a fee or a, attend a committee, has there any instances where that is waived or there's an exception made?
Absolutely. We have that every year with families, and most families, you know, are going to want to find a way to contribute in one way, shape, or form, but if they're in a difficult situation where they can't, we just explain, whenever you have a time or a time in the year or in the next year where you can contribute to a committee, then we just encourage you to sign up for that committee. It never prevents a student from coming to our school.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think it's great that parents volunteer, like absolutely, I love the ideas of committees. It seems like more of our schools could do that. I'm just thinking about some of our families that are just in, you know, really hard situations.
Absolutely. And our, and our parent organization is, is fabulous about that as well. So yeah, those, those families that are unable to, for whatever reason it may be, we just explain the importance of what it does for our campus when they contribute, but at a time when they're able to, then we encourage them to then move forward in that way.
And then my other question with, with Franklin is that there's a history of denying enrollment, and I have personal experience with this. So what assurances do families have that they won't be denied enrollment at Franklin?
So all families go through the orientation process. No family's denied enrollment unless there's a waitlist. So what we do have, though, is we do have screeners for students in the older grades, and then we go over those screeners with the parents about where our program is, where they're performing. But no one's denied, every parent's allowed to enroll or, or, you know, choose that school, and sometimes it may not be a good fit for their students, and, and that's okay as well, just like for teachers, sometimes it's not a good fit. But enrollment is not denied for any student. Years ago, there was a difference, probably 10 years ago, but there's been a change in laws, so no students are denied. We go through our orientation process, we do screeners, we give parents information, and then when they want to enroll, they're ready to enroll, so.
My other question is on determining the interest for either K-4 or K-5, so when is the communication? I know we, let me go back, we have to vote on this before we can- We have to vote on this before we can determine what the interest is going to be. And then after we vote on it, I'm assuming there's going to be a mass communication to the schools about the boundary changes and then the enrollment. Is there going to be a deadline for parents? Because I think we need to find out as soon as possible if this is going to be K4, K5. I think putting deadlines would be helpful.
So eventually, our vision is to have this be a K6 campus. We think it just makes sense to be K6, 7, 12. The issue we're dealing with at Wilson is space, right? And so what we'd like to do is see how enrollment goes over the course of the next two months. It opens, the reason all these items are here for you tonight is because November 12th, 12th? November 12th, thank you. Open enrollment is upon us. And so everyone out there, get ready. We want your kids in Mesa Public Schools, get them enrolled. We have lots of choice and variety. And then we'll observe enrollment at these schools throughout November and December. And we'd like, we can put deadlines on it, you know, hey, by January, if we're not seeing enrollment numbers at Franklin, Wilson, we can make a decision by January 31st of whether we're going to expand to K5. If enrollment's to a point where we're concerned, we'll keep it K4. Does that make sense? So we can get deadlines on that for sure.
Staff who are identified as, just to add on to that, staff that are, who are identified as fifth grade teachers will be alerted of the possibility as well. So they're make, when they're accepting the assignment or the job, they're made aware it could be shifted from the Brimhall campus to the Wilson campus next year.
It will not be a summer shift. I need everyone to hear that. We'll make our decision well prior to the summer and well prior to the end of, end of the school year. So we'll get, we'll get together as a team, get some deadlines on it, inform the board.
Dr. Strom, if I could add something to Member Walden's comment. Mr. Abrams and I have talked about having information sessions at Wilson if this is passed tonight, where Mr. Abrams and the Franklin principals can give information to the Wilson families about what a Franklin program is and put them through the, similar to the parent talk that parents hear when they want to join a Franklin, so that we can get a better idea of how many students that are currently at Wilson are interested in the Franklin program.
That's great. And I think with declining enrollment overall and the demographic changes, you said ideally it would be K through six. So that's, we're open to that in the future. If there is more declining enrollment, we would just shift fifth or sixth back to the Wilson school. All right. And then on specials, we talked about, so the specials at Wilson are, and I think you said was really robust specials at Franklin, so that's not going to change for the Wilson students on the specials?
No. And I need to be clear, I think my understanding of specials for band and orchestra is that they're an after-school program for, before, after school program. Thank you for our Franklin schools. So that'll function exactly in the same fashion in a before and after school fashion, so.
It'll mirror the other two elementary, Franklin elementary schools as far as the staffing.
And then just to clarify, because there is, there's always sort of been confusion about what choice schools mean at Mesa Public Schools. Choice is just schools that don't have official boundary designations. It doesn't mean that they can be selective about which students attend. Is that accurate?
That is 100% accurate. We are an open enrollment district in the state of Arizona and parents are open to enroll in any school they want to in Mesa Public Schools.
And then just, just my last one, I do think that, you know, if we're looking, you know, looking at postings for teachers with the Franklin model, I think these two reconfigurations are very unique. Having a campus that could be possibly fifth grade to 12th grade, you know, or just having a smaller K through fourth grade with, and we talked about that the principal now isn't, at Wilson hasn't done Spalding or Franklin School. And so I would like to encourage Dr. Strom that I think that we should have postings, both internal and external for these positions and possibly for the principal positions so that we make sure that we have people that can lead such a unique reconfiguration. And that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Walden, Mrs. Chaffee.
I was asked this week, how do you make tough decisions like this as a board member? And I said, it's hard when I know that these things impact people and families and staff. And so I want you to know that we as board members have really talked to a lot of people. We've reviewed all the information from the district. We've weighed the pros and cons. And for me, after kind of looking through all of that information, I, and, and talking to all of the people and thinking about how this is going to impact the future of our district, I do my best to vote my conscience and do what I think is going to set our families and our students up for success because I deeply believe in Mesa Public Schools and, and I, I recognize that we're in tricky times. And I appreciate that we are looking at innovative solutions to keep schools and neighborhoods and keep students in schools. I will tell you, I'm one of those parents that with my oldest was like, there's no way I would put them in a Franklin model. It was not a good fit for him, but I, my appreciation for it has really increased. I have nieces and nephews who've done the Franklin model and I have really seen the impact of having parents involved on campuses and informed. And I have seen the value of the science of reading and I think we're seeing that across the nation. And I've seen the value of like a comprehensive curriculum where teachers know where they're supposed to be and when they're supposed to be there. And I would love to see that implemented in our K through six schools across the district. I think those are values that we can learn from, from the Franklin model that don't have to be just unique to the Franklin model. I think those are things that we can value as a district. Parents, strong curriculum resources. I think as we're seeing the data come in about student performance across the state, that we can look at the schools that are doing things well. It doesn't mean that we have to take everything from Franklin, but I appreciate the work of our principals and the things that they're doing. And I hope that as we, you know, train up a new, a new principal now, that we can maybe take some of that information into our other schools. Is in alignment with that, does it cost anymore to run a Franklin model versus one of our other elementary school models?
Most of our costs are in staffing costs and we staff the Franklin schools similarly to all our schools. So I think if I actually got down into a technical analysis, the answer would be no. It doesn't cost anymore. In fact, I probably would suggest with such standardized desks and chairs, like if we actually examined furniture costs, you might see a little cost savings on the furniture side of things. But in general, most of our money's wound up in staffing. We staff them the same, so.
Okay. I think that's all the question I have. I think all my board members have done a great job.
Thank you. I do have a question. We talked about Wilson teachers. What about Wilson classified staff? Where, where does that lead?
Human resources will be in contact with the classified staff. We're analyzing how many may come from the elementary side from Franklin campus to the Wilson campus. But we have, we want to keep them in Mesa Public Schools. They've already been informed. It just may be in a different school location, but that's still to be determined.
Okay. And I do recognize that a lot of these questions are hard to answer because we have to prove this tonight to move on. And so as we filled in a lot of emails and different questions have come in, it is tricky to answer because we don't know where we're leading, you know, where it's going. And I do know that I've had quite a few conversations with parents and families. Their concern is splitting our fifth and sixth graders at another campus. And so as we look at things, I would love to see what we can do to fit as many grades as possible at Wilson. I want us to grow, but I also, I think our families, when we look at continuity and you're splitting families between so many campuses, that becomes a hesitation. And so do we stay at Franklin or do we leave? And I've heard that a few times, like, and so I think like Board Member Walden said about timeframe, that's going to be critical because they might be waiting to see how many grades are going to be at Wilson before they decide what they're doing with their students.
Yeah, I can tell you at our parent organization meetings, you know, transportation and then the grade level bans, they are the pieces. And like I said, we keep working and working, you know, with transportation and then hopefully with having information sessions that we're trying to kind of front load this next month so we can get a pretty good idea as soon as possible for what enrollment would be. Because ultimately, I know there has to be a decision made on those grade level bans so parents, you know, know exactly what would happen next year.
I appreciate that. And I think about it, as I look at our high schools and we've made changes there, we've called them the pioneering of their, their schools. And so I think about these sixth graders that they might be in a little bit of a limbo land that we look for opportunities to, you know, make them feel a little bit important. Because eventually, I think the plan is Wilson will be a K6, but we just, we are in a lot of unknowns. Do I have any other questions?
I'd like to piggyback off of Member Chaffee. Just because I have a gifted education background, I actually do have an appreciation for Franklin. I do. I went, when I first saw, I was like, oh, this is totally different than what I, what I had envisioned, right? So I appreciate the, the work. And I, I think the role of parental involvement is so important. I'm sure research still shows that when a parent is involved with a child's education, they are more likely to succeed and graduate, whatever level of support they can give them, right? The last question that I know that parents are going to want to know, or that was asked, was your parent organization? So perhaps when you have the listening sessions, are there going to be two separate parent organizations? One for Franklin, Brimhall, one for Franklin at? They really want continuity is what I got from the emails that I got from Franklin parents. And they, they're concerned that the continuity will not be there if we split up the elementary, you know, at a certain spot. Although a lot of districts around us do middle schools, so a middle school model starts at sixth grade. So I, I, I think that's a nice, that would be a good cutoff to put sixth grade into, that's what Tempe does. I think Chandler is a middle school model too, isn't it?
Every, every district has their unique splits. And I will tell you right now that there is one of our competitors who started on the foundation of a K4, 5, 12 split under the idea that you, you teach kids to read K through four and maybe you need fourth grade to get kids to that level of reading you need. And then five through 12 is about content knowledge, content acquisition and trying to get as much material across a variety of contents. That is not a public school, by the way, competitor. That's a charter school competitor that does that. So I've seen every type of grade configuration there is out there, but honor the fact that Mesa Public Schools, we've been traditionally K6 and, and want people to hear that's what we want to work to at Franklin, Wilson.
And just to respond to the parent organization question, my parent organization is the best group of parents that can help support a school that an administrator could ask for. And we have thorough conversations every month and then more thorough conversations every week. And then some calls in the evening just for thoughts and ideas of what we can do to best support the students in this situation. That ultimately, the goal is to be temporary. So those conversations are happening and keeping that continuity. You know, the elementary students, we still want that feel of one school, almost like the feel of one Franklin, you know, like with multiple campuses. This is like a one mini Franklin with two campuses for a period of time. But really to have that support unified with one parent organization has been the conversations. So therefore, we can still continue those traditions with the students that have been developed with this group. So there, those conversations happen regularly and they're so thoughtful, our parents and, and caring and I can't say enough good things about them. So I know they're going to do the right thing, whatever they choose is going to be what's best for those students.
We good? Any other? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Abrams, for taking a, taking one and taking all of our questions. We appreciate it.
With a vote of five yays, we have approved designating this school at 5619 East Glade Avenue, Mesa, Arizona 85206, a choice school named Franklin Accelerated Academy, Wilson Campus, with grade levels of preschool through six, beginning in the 2026-27 school year, with the intent to enroll students in grades kindergarten through fourth to begin in the 2026-27 school year.
We are now on to action item C. Do I have a motion to approve the addition of nine through 12th grades to the school at 4949 East Southern Avenue, which will be named Franklin High School, starting with the 2026-27 school year, with the intent to enroll grade nine and potentially grade 10, depending on enrollment for the 2026-27 school year?
So I'll second.
Ms. Benson have moved and Ms. Hutchinson has seconded. Thank you, ladies. Any discussion? We'll start with Ms. Hutchinson.
Yeah, I don't know who I'm going to be asking. Sounds, sounds like Mr. Abrams is the man. All right, man. All right. Okay, so I have, I have, a lot of my questions are being answered that I have for Franklin High School by just understanding the Franklin model better. And I, so I, so I, but I do have two questions, having been a high school teacher. So what are the costs of turning the learning environment at Franklin Accelerated Academy Brimhall campus into a high school campus? I mean, my, my, my hamster wheel is going and I'm thinking about facilities like furniture and equipment and bleachers and auditorium and the locker room and the learning resources and teacher training, library upgrades and, oh, now you're a high school. So now you got to have cameras and SROs and, and parking. So I'm thinking, whoa, what's the price tag going to be on that? Okay, so that's my, that's my first question is about taking this space that has been a junior high campus for decades and, and now turning it into a high school campus. My second question, because Franklin schools have specialized curriculum, teaching practices, et cetera, how is the staff being hired slash prepared to meet the requirement of a Franklin model at the high school level?
Want me to take that one first?
I'll come back to the first one.
Okay. So the Franklin model changes when it gets to secondary school. It's not the same traditional model with Spalding method. The grading scale goes back to the traditional grading scale of, of all the neighborhood schools. In secondary school, you start offering courses. Every course isn't at an accelerated pace. So algebra at Franklin Junior High right now is algebra, the same course that's offered anywhere else, whether it's Shepherd, Mountain View, any other campus. So the, the structure of the classrooms may be different, but the, the actual courses and the resources that are used are the same resources that we use across Mesa Public Schools. The course offerings are different, like at Franklin Junior High and really Franklin High School would be a continuation of Franklin Junior High is the idea. But we offer multiple levels of courses, like for math, there's three different levels of math for our current eighth graders. So in, in the traditional elementary school model, it's different when you get to that secondary level. So there's not a specific Spalding training for secondary teachers. It's certifications for those content areas. When then you get to high school, now it just kind of, just continues that with more specialized content areas instead of a kind of general, you know, seventh grade or K through eight with a science endorsement. You know, you have to have the proper certifications for the certain courses or AP certifications or if it was dual enrollment certifications. Those are going to have to continue because we're, we're going to be on level when it comes to graduation, college, career recruitment with every other high school. And those playing fields are, have to be, you know, leveled as far as when you're comparing students and their achievements and things that they've accomplished. So it's kind of like a mind shift when you get to secondary school for Franklin.
I'm worried a little bit about tier one instruction, but if we're starting ninth grade, maybe 10th, that we're gradually leaning into this model of a Franklin High School that maybe I, we want to make sure that we got the best instruction. And I don't, I don't doubt for a second that, that that wouldn't happen. But it's, 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 it's a different ballgame between junior high and high school, having done it. It's, it's a whole different ballgame.
Yeah, and currently, just so you know, we have teachers certified to teach high school courses at Franklin Junior High. And we have many teacher leaders that are so passionate about our program and passionate about the school. And they come to me with, I think if we were to say move a few teachers from eighth grade to ninth grade, and then you bring in a few other ninth grade teachers and add a couple other eighth grade teachers, you have some of the more core staff philosophy instructional practices that, that lend itself to incorporate a little, little better, stronger, sooner, you know, and, and kind of grow along those ways. So there's a lot of smart people with great ideas that, that have this going on constantly.
They got hamster wheels too. Yeah.
A lot of hamsters out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson.
On the, yeah, on the financial side, we've walked campus with Mr. Kramer. We walked campus with Mr. Eubanks. The blessing of being in Mesa Public Schools for both the Shepherd and Franklin items before you is that these used to be seven, sorry, seventh through ninth grade camp, I thought I said it wrong, I didn't, seventh through ninth grade campuses. And those ninth grade campuses were fully outfitted with really big time facilities. I would say that Franklin, Brimhall, Shepherd rival some, some like facilities of small rural high schools almost because of what they're provided. So locker room wise, we're in good shape at these schools. Security camera rise, we take all security across Mesa Public Schools seriously. All the conduit runs are there already. It's already a school. All the conduit runs are there already, it's already a school. We may have to add a few cameras here and there, but that's not the major cost oftentimes in putting up stuff. So, and we're currently going through camera review process in the IT department, so it'll fit nicely over there. The biggest, the biggest one you brought up in my mind financially that we had to work through was the parking lot. That's going to occur probably in 2029, '30, maybe '28, '29, if there's enough drivers and the faculty doesn't fit, we'll see. But we already have a plan for that. There's about 11 portables that are sitting around the Brimhall campus that Custodial Services has vacated. They used to use it as a training ground for custodians. They are now over at the Sun Valley Complex, we changed that name, did I get it right? They're now over at the Sun Valley Complex getting training, that's south of Red Mountain High School, and we'll be able to bring down those portables. The portable savings are $15,000 a portable, multiply that by nine to 11, right? Depending on, depending on the range, that's, that's $135,000, $165,000. And so that's recouped in perpetuity. So within about three years from that portal removal, we can pay for the parking lot itself. So there's a cost offset to asphalt in that parking lot. Generally asphalt's going to run in $5 to $7 a square foot range. So hopefully, we have some unique solutions. That's where, and the benefit, by the way, those portals gone away, the first three years will pay for a capital expenditure, because remember in Arizona, you can move M&amp;O to capital, capital to M&amp;O. So first three years will do that, but then once that's done, that's M&amp;O dollars coming back to the district from getting those portables off that campus. So lots of, lots of unique things we're thinking about, and I can't promise you we're not going to run into a few here and there where we go, oh, we, yeah, we need to do that, we need that. Mr. Eubanks is already building in some uniform budget to his current athletic budget, but we don't want to get too far ahead of us because at these schools, they're not going to have comprehensive athletic programs, right? And so by not having comprehensive athletic programs, they're going to have to figure out what student interest is, and then we'll buy the stuff, right? Then we'll say like, student interest is in cross country. All right, let's buy some cross country uniforms for them. But that's why we're a little limo. We want, a lot of what's going to happen in the elective arena at both these schools and in the athletic arena is going to be driven by student interest because we won't have the economies of scale to offer everything on these campuses.
Thank you. Ms. Benson. Mr. Abrams, can you share with us the interest of Franklin Parents for a high school model? Because it sounds to me like it's actually going to be very similar to the education potentially that they would get at any one of our comprehensive high schools, but on a much smaller scale. So they'll still have, well, and one of the concerns of parents, a couple that emails that I got were that, well, we thought we were interested in Franklin High School, but we're not if we can't have dual enrollment AP because our kids are college bound. So it sounds to me like that is, should not be a concern for these parents. Is that correct? They may not have comprehensive sports, but they will have access to, assuming we have certified teachers, to dual enrollment, to AP classes. Is that accurate? Do you still see the desire for a high school?
Yeah, so as far as those offerings goes, the biggest question that we had was from dual enrollment, and that's a certified staff, you know, question as far as having someone certified to teach those classes later on. The idea is that we want those students to be able to be college bound if that's their choice, you know, to move forward in that way. So absolutely, as far as those core course offerings, they're going to have AP and dual enrollment is the goal, as long as, you know, certified staff can be hired to teach those courses. I think some of the electives, what my parents didn't understand is you can't offer such a wide variety of electives when it's aligned with career and technical education because there has to be two-year cohorts in certain tracks. So whereas in junior high, I can offer a wide variety, in high school, you do have to have a bit of a track, so we've had a lot of education with parents for that. The special part that parents really talk about for me is, is not necessarily the course, it's the culture of the school, the small, smaller school environment. One of the most common conversations we have every spring with parents after promotion and the 8th grade awards ceremony is thank you so much, thanks to the staff for everything that they've done, when are we going to have the high school? I don't want it to stop. And that's been going on for a while. So I think some of the parents are kind of learning about what, what is different between a comprehensive high school and what we would offer, and if a student wants to play football, we're not going to have football because we can't. If the student wants biotech, we're not going to have a biotech track at Franklin, it just wouldn't work. They would, they would, you know, choose Red Mountain for that. But if they want a smaller school environment with highly structured, high expectations, where my 7th grade teachers know every single student in our junior high. My 7th grade teachers know every student. My 8th grade teachers know about two-thirds of the students, either they're teaching them that year, or they've taught an elective, or club, or sport, or something like that. So every student is known, their relationships are built, and I think one of the things that I'm most proud of has nothing to do with academics, it has nothing to do with sports, it has nothing to do with performing arts. The number of students that come back when there's 10th grade pre-SAT tests, and I have 40 to 50 9th graders come back to visit their junior high teachers when they could be home, sleeping, playing a video game, but they want to come back to Franklin Junior High to talk to their teachers, to visit with us, to tell us how great they're doing. And then the seniors come back when others are taking tests, and the juniors come when others, like, to me, that's probably the most special feeling that you can have for a staff, because it shows the impact and appreciation that they've had for years to come after that. So as far as continuing on Franklin High School, I have all the confidence in the world that we're going to have a great school. It's going to be a small school, it's going to be different, just like Franklin Junior High is a small school, and it's different. But if you saw Franklin Junior High 15 years ago, and then you see it now, you never would have thought it was the same school 15 years ago with 90 students and some portables in the back of a Red Mountain lot, right? And here we are, competing in every area, superior scores in performing arts, competing for championships, not all sports all years, but competitive in most every sport every year, extracurriculars, clubs, community service, and then of course, the academic area is extremely strong. So that's the goal to continue on for Franklin High School, and that's the pocket, you know, families that I think truly are going to appreciate it. And there's always, there's always an uneasiness of, I thought I was going to get this high school catalog when I registered. You're not going to get the whole high school catalog when you register, it's going to be a smaller catalog that's a bit more streamlined, but that can still make an absolutely fabulous experience for students in a well-rounded high school education.
Okay, I, did I hear you say that you're going to have CTE courses and two-year bans? Like, like the academy model? Did I?
Nope. This is, this is a six-period day school, and there may be an opportunity to work with our executive director, College Career and Community, to implement a traditional CTE-type program, but we won't be able to run every CTE program on that campus.
Okay, well, that's why I thought.
Yeah, that was the example I used, like, we wouldn't be able to.
You wouldn't be able to.
Wouldn't be able to offer all of that. You have to have a certain streamline in one, say, track for CT.
Okay, I'm going to blame it on my neck. I misheard you.
That's different than.
Member Benson.
And the last, oh, go ahead.
Just real quick. One, one little thing that I need Jeff to hear, Mr. Abrams, sorry, to hear right now as well, is, you know, and this goes back to member Hutchinson's question about expense. I got hit with a question on what about the fumhood for chemistry lab, right? And that's going to be an expense someday, converting a lab to that. We've got to think uniquely, right? We say, we have ULC classes through ASU that the board blessed us to approve, and chemistry is a very non-controversial ASU class, right? It's a traditional subject class that fits a Franklin model really well, and there's no reason why we can't take advantage of ASU ULC classes. So I just want everyone to hear, we, you know, we may not be able to get every certified teacher at Franklin that we need for certain subjects, but it doesn't mean that they won't be able to provide it through some sort of unique way to look at ULC classes through the university and having learning experiences for kids. So we'll, I, I mean, that's what 11th and 12th grade could look, could look a little different in getting traditional subjects delivered with college certified teachers, not just high school certified teachers, so.
Well, then, that's, I actually was thinking about the ASU as a possibility, that, that'll fit great because you don't have to have, I mean, it's ASU teachers. So one final question, is now that we are moving to a regional model, you know, and it's based on high schools, where, where is Brimhall going to fit?
So Ms. Mesa, Dr. Eses have been working tirelessly on all those regional models, and what school goes to what direction. I will tell you that our effort in Mesa Public Schools is to diversify our portfolio of school offerings across all learning communities. We know the number one reason that kids don't take advantage of school choice, and it's in research, is because of transportation, right? It's very hard for a parent from Dobson region, Dobson learning community, to get up to K Design Academy, or STEM Academy up at the Red Mountain Ranch area. So with that being said, we're going to continue to try to diversify our portfolio in every region. So our executive directors were purposefully selected because they have to be able to function across every delivery model. Does that make sense to you? And so what I mean by that is, there'll be some traditional neighborhood schools in their learning community, there'll be a Franklin school in their learning community, there'll be, right, a traditional comprehensive high school, and there may be Franklin High School in their learning community as well. It's, you've got to think about these executive learning communities and regions more supervisory than staunch boundaries, if that makes sense to you. There will be some kids who go to an elementary school that are in the skyline learning community, but because 30% of those kids from that elementary school go over to Mesa High School by boundary, they'll end up at Mesa High School. So you can't get married to the fact that it's all boundary centric, if that makes sense, if that makes sense. So Franklin High School will fit into one of the learning communities, and be, that executive director is going to have to know how Franklin High School runs and how to lead it forward with that principle.
And the last comment, and I'll have it for Shepherd as well, I love the idea of junior high and high school mixed for those really intellectually capable kids in math or in reading and language. They're not limited to just junior high courses. They can, I assume, be able to take some high school courses as well. So I, I love that. So that's all I have. Thank you. Ms. Baldwin? No questions? Ms. Chaffee?
Yeah, I agree with Board Member Benson that there's some awesome opportunities. I know a lot of junior high kids who are in that advanced accelerated math option, it's like, oh, again, we're doing, we're only there for two years, and now we're trying to take high school classes, so I think there's some great opportunities. How will we manage shared spaces in a way that we can ensure a safe and positive and age-appropriate environment?
So, oh, do you want me to? Oh. Well, if he said, "Good question," then that, now I'm nervous. No, I think, you know, it's, it is a good question, and I relate it back to when Brimhall opened. I have 8th graders on that campus with kindergartners coming in, and parents couldn't believe that there's going to be kindergartners on the same campus as 8th graders. Oh my goodness. And those 8th grade parents are like, there's going to be kindergartners having accidents down the hall where my 8th graders, and, and I can tell you that that's probably been one of the least concerns that I've had to address in any way, shape, or form. And usually, it's a kindergartner doing something silly, and an 8th grade teacher being like, so what happens when a student does that? Thinking they're going to be suspended. I'm like, no, we call home, and we just kind of remind them about expectations. So, so I look at it the same way, except it's just a few other grades. I have a 10th grader, I have a 6th grader. I have no concerns as a parent about the 10th grade, 6th grade difference, but if my 5th grader is my oldest student, and they're having a 10th grader on campus, that's a different lens to look through. And so that's the type of lens that we work through. The campus is set up in a way where you, we currently have different restrooms, schedules, cafeteria, EE, everything already between junior high and elementary that's separated. So for the most part, those elementary students that would be there for the time being are still going to be very, very separated. As far as junior high goes, junior high's still junior high, so sports for junior high remains junior high. Performances for junior high remain junior high. Their courses, you know, their electives, they're going to remain junior high. So it truly does function that way. There may be some overlap in performing arts, or, or like a higher math class for certain students. But for the most part, separating the younger students from the older ones, start and end times are going to be different is what it's looking like. Transportation is different is what it's going to look like, like it currently is. So there's a lot of natural barriers that are put in place, and then with scheduling, that kind of also lends itself to it. And the last thing is, our elementary students don't walk anywhere without supervision. They don't walk from recess to class, class to cafeteria, cafeteria to class, to bus, without supervision. So wherever they're walking, there's always supervision, secondary students change classes like, you know, normal secondary students, but then we have supervision outside and in the hallways when that happens. So there's a lot of systems in place that, that help to prevent any kind of concerns that come up, and having the kindergartners all the way to preschool now to 8th grade, you know, we've had pretty good systems in place to keep, prevent any concerns, and I think it'll be the same for those elementary students while they're there, and junior high is still going to be separate for those events.
Thank you for that thoughtful response. I appreciate that you're doing the work of thinking through that, and I agree, I think there's a different lens. I would agree, like, when it's your oldest going into it, that feels differently than when you're like, oh, I've got a 10-year-old who's, or a 10th grader who's ridiculous sometimes, and we realize they're maybe not so big and scary as we think they are. Are there enrollment minimums that we are requiring to have the addition of grades nine and 10? Like a minimum number of students who need to enroll?
If we're enrolled at less than 25 kids, as of the same probably deadline that we're going to set for Franklin Wilson, we're going to have to have interesting conversations in the spring. These are always the risks. Same thing that occurred when we did K STEM Academy at Red Mountain Ranch, like, you're always nervous about initial enrollment. We think we're going to allot originally for FTE for these campuses, and that enrollment's 100, right? But that's a single, I've explained to several board members, that's a single year risk because if we enrolled 50 in the students in the first year, and you allot four FTE, you're a little outside of allotment, which affects the budget. But then the next year, they roll up to sophomore year, right? And now all of a sudden, you don't allot anymore FTE, you have four FTEs still, and you're back right on target. So it's a one-year risk, and, and, and less than, you can see why less than 25 becomes problematic, because then the next year, you're still significantly high in budget when the 25 kids roll up, and you have 50 kids, you go, oh, it's going to be a two, three-year budget impact. So that's the general range. And then we do, our these schools, so the community knows this, we are going to have maximum capacities on grade levels forever because these schools can only fit so many kids. So we don't, we don't think we'll ever have over 150 kids in a cohort. These will always remain small, intimate learning environments for our community. So maximum capacity is at 150 kids on these campuses per cohort, and it'll never be bigger than a 600-student high school, if that makes sense to everyone.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to wrap my head around as a Mesa grad, like, there were like 900 in mine, so I think there's some great opportunities for students and families.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, Mr. Abrams, have you slept at all? Because my brain hasn't stopped, like, thinking of all these things, and you have thought of a lot of things.
So I don't, I don't have a lot of superpowers, but I do have one superpower, and that is when my head hits the pillow, the lights are out for six hours guaranteed, and my wife isn't the biggest fan of that superpower. So yes, it's a, it's a very exciting time, and it's a very busy time, but I do, I do get some sleep.
No, I just want you to know how much we appreciate you. I think it seems to be very thoughtful as we've asked these questions. It's, it's made to me anyway that you have thought through a lot of this process, even without knowing for sure that, you know, what's going to happen, but I take it in, I take it from your community you have, that you'll get lots of feedback and some input on how to, to work with them, some things, and, and I appreciate the feedback and the listening that, because everyone brings a different perspective, and so I appreciate the work that's gone into this, and I appreciate being here tonight to answer all these questions.
I think that we are ready, Ms. Kirby, to take a vote.
With a vote of five yays, we have approved the addition of 9 through 12 grades to the school at 4949 East Southern Avenue, which will be named Franklin High School, starting with the 2026-27 school year, with the intent to enroll grade nine and potentially grade 10, depending on enrollment for the 2026-27 school year. We will now go to D. Do I have a motion to approve the addition of grades 9 through 12 at 1407 North Alta Mesa Drive, Mesa, Arizona 85205, to be named Shepherd College Preparatory, starting in the 2026-27 school year? Enrollment for the 2026-27 school year will begin with 9th grade students.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And we will start the discussion. Board Member Hutchinson.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Strom, are we going to have some information from Principal Benza before we ask questions, or you want us to dive right in?
I would prefer you dive right in.
All right.
We are prepared to answer questions.
Here we go.
It looks like Ms. Benza is up, ready to answer.
I know she's ready.
I'm ready to dive in with you.
Okay, here we go. All right, so I've got, basically have two questions, and it's, and it's based on the description that we got. So for those of you that might not have read the description, it says that SCP, excuse me, SCP... not have read the description, it says that SCP, excuse me, SCP, Shepherd College Preparatory, will provide a smaller academically focused environment, emphasizing rigor, continuity, and college readiness. The program will offer accelerated coursework, advanced placement, dual enrollment opportunities, mentorship, early college and career planning, beginning in middle school. Okay. So here's where my question begins. How do these qualities differ from our six comprehensive high schools? And, and, or in other words, how would, how is Shepherd differentiated from the mission of our other high schools? Or in other words, why, why would parents choose Shepherd? And then my second question, and this came because of Hacktivate today. I met a graduate of Gilbert Classical Academy at Hacktivate, and, and he said, "I want you to ask this question," because it, it's based on what Mr. Abrams said.
Does he need to come back up?
No, 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 he, no, 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 no. He said, "It's not the course, it's the culture of the school." So what this, what this kid said to me is, he said, "How are you going to ensure that students are supported as they encounter the rigor and the very high expectations of a college preparatory school?" Because he said, the attrition was, it sounded like MIT. Went from 150 kids to 80. There weren't the supports for the kids. So first of all, why choose Shepherd as a college prep? And secondly, how will those kids, with that type of a demanding rigor, be supported?
Okay. So to answer question number one, why Shepherd College Prep, I think it's for families who are looking for what Mesa Schools offers at our larger schools with our AP classes, dual enrollment, on level. But in that smaller environment, where you can be more supportive, and to be more supportive, a lot of it comes down to hiring. So I think for me, my biggest challenge in the spring is going to be, who am I going to bring in to help build that culture? The first couple of years, I'm going to have to be really strategic in the teachers that I hire, and the counselor that I get to hire at some point, because we're not only going to build tradition and culture, and build on the culture that we've created at Shepherd, but then also find ways to support our students. And one of the things that we have done, I think in, this is our fourth year, is we have a homeroom. We call it rodeo. We're the stallions with the rodeo together, and we try to build our culture through that. We try to teach our students about our community and support our community. We do grade checks in there. So we're going to continue with that into our high school, but model each grade level for grade level appropriate things that they're doing. So for example, their junior year, when they're starting to really look at colleges, and they're doing those college visits, they're coming back and reporting that, "Hey, I went here, I saw this with my family." We're going to take that, "Well, what do you need to get into college?" Oh, you have to be able to write a resume. Then we'll help them with that. So we'll give them some of those supports. And we really look at a smaller environment that we can do that, because we could really know our students. And I, going to steal, Mr. Abrams said that his 7th grade teachers know all of their students. That's the same thing that we have at Shepherd, is we know our students really well, we know our community. So when we have our end-of-the-year activities, the same thing happens. I have parents say, "Can we stay?" I had a young lady, I ran into a young lady the other day at an event, and she said, "Can I come back?" And I said, "No, you cannot. I don't have anything to offer you." But that is, we have a lot of families looking for that smaller environment. When I look at the preparation that we've put into this and the discussions we have, I think about my own stu-, my own child, and what do I want for him? And I want him to have a Mesa Public Schools diploma. Like, that is, you know, that is top-notch. But I, I want a smaller environment for him. He is not going to be in an AP class and everything. He's not going to take honors 7th grade English next year. He's going to hate me when he sees this someday. But he'll take honors science, he'll take honors math. So we are really looking at, how do we look at the whole child and support them? Because it's not right. There are very few kids who will be in an AP class for all four of their core academics. We know that some kids will want that, some will maybe want an honor, some will want to be on level. So we're really looking at how to have all of that within there. So it is very similar to what would be offered at our comprehensive high schools, which I've spent many years at those, but in a smaller environment where we can really know our students and provide those supports. Does that answer your question?
It sure does. Thank you.
Mrs. Benson?
No, I, I mentioned when we were contemplating this a couple months ago, I love the idea, again, because when you have academically gifted kids, in certain areas, they are limited within a certain structure. But I also love that you just said, you know, like, "My son's not going to take AP honors English." I'm hoping that you hire teachers that understand, "Just because I'm awesome here, doesn't mean I'm awesome here," right? We, we are all unique and have different things that we are really, really talented in. In my own personal experience, some of my kids had teachers that thought, "Well, you go to," it was called ELP then, "You go to ELP, you should be here all the time." I'm like, "No, they're still kids," right? They're still people. So I'm hoping you're going to include some, maybe some parent education as well.
Yes.
That they are still kids, and we want them to be, you know, the, the real goal with a college prep, or even a Franklin High School, we want them to continue on in their learning, right? If it becomes so rigorous that they want to drop out, they're, they're not going to want to do that. The other advantage I see to this, as well as the Franklin, you have the potential for having a community of kids that are together, what, six years? Seven years with Franklin? It's going to be more. I can just see some profound friendships long-term, because they've gone through all that weird teenage stuff together, you know? But they work together. So the small school model, it's not for everyone. Some people are going to want that big, large, rah-rah. But I, I love the idea that we are expanding our choices, we're becoming competitive, and again, let's draw people back to Mesa. So I'm really excited about the college prep possibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walden. Any questions?
Yeah. So are we going to communicate to the whole community about the college prep in case there's students from other high schools or junior highs that are interested in this opportunity?
Yes.
All right. Good. Good. That was an easy question. I was hoping to answer that one.
Let me, let me explain a little bit more.
You take the easy one.
If we're not advertising on a constant basis in a market-based education environment in education, you should be advertising 180 a school year. And we've been working with the principal the last two years. You've got to advertise over the summer. The summer's where parents make most of their choices. Like, we have got to make sure parents throughout this district know that they have a place and a home for them to make a choice for their child. And so the answer is yes, and for parents that did not happen to choose us this last year in transition from 8th to 9th grade, we're going to be contacting you too. And we're going to say, "Hey, we have new options for you at the 9th grade level," or, sorry, at the 9th, 10th grade level. "Why don't you come back and choose Mesa Public Schools again?"
And I'm just wondering, just to clarify too, are we thinking about, you know, because we could email every parent in the district, K through 12. I think maybe, like, there's going to be parents that are, have kids interested in elementary school that are thinking about, "Okay, where do I go for junior high or high school?" So are we looking at something really comprehensive like that, too? Okay. Very good. I'm excited about a college prep school. What's different about this, this change is that I didn't hear anything from anybody. We didn't get any emails, like, for or against. So I, I'm not sure what that means, but I think having-
We have spread the word really well.
Oh, good. Good, good, good. So I think maybe it's a good enough thing that, because sometimes people will email and will say, like, "Please vote yes," but maybe they thought you'd be stupid to vote no, so they didn't bother to email us. I, I am excited for a college, a college prep school, and especially the ways that the district is using extra space is, is really exciting. There's, there's been some stuff in the news, too, about districts with all this excess space and calling it wasteful, and that is not what's been happening at Mesa Public Schools. I think we've been able to take extra space and develop really cool opportunities that I think will help serve everybody in our, in our district. It's a, it's a diverse city out in Mesa. I love it. I always joke around that it's like, it's the biggest city that feels like a small town, I think, in, in the country, right? So I'm, I've got no, no feedback, just I want you to know my enthusiasm and definitely in voting yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Chaffee?
Shepherd is a campus that is near and dear to my heart. My family makes fun of me all the time because I sat through Beauty and the Beast, and I just sobbed because these 7th and 8th graders did a full-fledged production that would put many high schools to shame with a functioning fountain and all of the vocals. It was so impressive. I, it will make me teary to think about. Seriously, so impressive. And so many families are choosing Shepherd right now because of the theater and choral program. Like, a third of the junior high students participate in the choir. Like, that is a remarkable number. And we know that we've seen them perform. They perform all over the state.
They're fabulous.
They're fabulous. So I was kind of surprised when the proposal was a college preparatory program, because everyone knows Shepherd for the arts program. So how are we going to continue to show, this might be a district question, because I know that you support it, but how are we going to continue to show that we value and support the arts program at Shepherd?
Well, I've had the same experience at Shepherd Junior High. I annually go out to their events, and my wife has gone with me because they're so phenomenal. And I will tell you that the elective, you know, as we said with most small schools, the electives will not be as wide-ranging as a comprehensive campus. And I'm thoroughly convinced that the, one of the primary electives that will be at Shepherd, not just at the junior high level, but in Shepherd College Prep, will be related to music and/or performing arts and/or whatever direction Ms. Benzah wants to take it with her staff. So I, I see it actually as an ability for the, the school to flourish into a 7th through 12th grade performing arts as the primary elective area for, for students. And then we will always continue to support just wonderful teachers. I mean, every, every single thing, the amazing part about education is the teacher and their passion for their subject and their inspiration for students in their subject is so important to student learning. And so we'll do everything we can to continue to make sure that teacher thrives and those, sorry, those teachers thrive on that campus with that program. Ms. Benzah, if you don't feel support from us, you just have a videotape of me saying we will support you, so.
Yep. Just said it.
And for Mr. Moore, I just want to bring up that there's some things I'd like to look at. Just with my arts background are solutions for facilities. Like, you go to those concerts, and they are already at max capacity in the auditorium. Their last choral program was very full, their last choral concert. And so when we start adding grades, I think there's some complicating things that we didn't have when we built those. So facilities, storage, and transporting students, those are all things that come into play when we talk about arts. And just reiterating what I said before, let's look at those class fees, because it's really, really hard to support a performing arts program when you do not have the opportunity to collect fees. So let's look at that program that we're already piloting at our junior highs and maybe bring back some information to the board to talk about that. I really appreciate that you're providing non-honors options, because I do think students have lots of ways that they can engage, there are different things that they want to take as honors or dual enrollment. Will the honors classes be double-coded, meaning that, like, honor students and non-honor students, this might be a question for Dr. Esles, honor students and non-honor students will be taking classes in the same class?
No, that is not our plan to do that. It's to have separate classes.
Okay. And then Dr. Esles, this is a question for you. The rodeo class, is this like a freshman seminar class? Is this a class we're piloting? And do we have a curriculum to review for it?
No. I will let Mrs. Benzah expand on that, but it's, it's really just a homeroom that they, they start the day that way.
Yeah. We start, every, we start four days a week with rodeo. We've created most of our curriculum that we use in there. We've been, we have, you know, the Thrive program that we're, that we do. So that's one of the things that we do in there. We met with Lindsay Lenoff and talked about, I hope I say it right, Naviance, 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 and how we can use that as we move forward with the high school as well. So we're looking at some of those things to bring it into there.
I appreciate that. I think that sometimes we get into these gray areas of, like, curriculum approval board, you know? I'm not going to-
Yes.
-beat that today. And I just want to make a statement that we're hearing over and over again from our community that they do have these desires for traditional programs, for dual enrollment, for honors, for AP. And I appreciate the thoughtful approach that we're taking to meeting the needs of those students. Outside of Shepherd and Franklin, I want to make sure that we are articulating to the public how we are meeting the needs of those students at our comprehensive high schools, because we have also received a significant amount of emails and conversations from parents asking for us to protect those pathways at our high schools.
Thank you. One question I have is, what about for me, the student that is not in any honors classes, but really wants to go to this great performing arts school? Is there a place for me?
Absolutely, there's a place for you.
Okay.
Because we will have on-level classes as well.
And they won't be required to take an honors class?
No.
Like, they won't have one, any, like, requirement to do at least in one honors?
No. There will be no requirement for that.
Okay. You might have just made one of these little girls I know's day. So she was excited, but didn't think she could, you know? So thank you. I think- I have one. Yes, go ahead. My assumption is that, because it's college prep, is it going to follow more of a classical education model?
No, it is not.
So not based in the seven liberal arts of?
No, we are not going to do that.
Okay. And college prep, Madam President, is on grade level, too?
I agree.
You don't-
It's a little intimidating, though, when these kids hear college prep, they think they have to be. So when they hear these things, sometimes they think it's only if they're doing, like, high honors classes.
Well, that's where I think the education of parents comes in, and, hey, they're still kids.
Yep. That's why on November 18th at 7:30 in my auditorium, we're having a parent session.
You better say that one more time so that we can all write that down.
November 18th at 7:30. Show off Shepherd for my 7th and 8th grade will be from 6:00 to 7:30 that day. Please come to that as well.
Yes. Mrs. Hutchinson?
In the evening, yes.
Mrs. Hutchinson?
So Dr. Strom, I got a question. So did I hear that SCP, SCP, will be allowed to explore a specialization? What, if it might be performing arts, or it might be humanities, that, 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 that we are going to be based in student and community interest? And, and perhaps if there is a specialization that, that, that our new college prep campus has, that they can go that, in that direction?
Yeah. So, so here's what I, here's a little style leadership I just don't believe in. And I've been in big districts before, you guys know that. I, I can't tell you what a community needs. When I, we try to get on camp, every Monday and Friday, we're on campuses, right? And we're trying to get out to every community. But Mesa's 200 square miles big, and we're active. But the people that are going to know what a community needs more than me are those people and those people over there. And so, yeah, I mean, what I need you to hear, hear me say is, they won't be able to offer as many electives, we know that. They won't have the economies of scale. But they're going to have to gauge off student interest and demand what their specialty in electives are. And then our job is to support, like, you know, they, they need to go attract kids, we need to support them when they get those kids and say, "This is what they choose to do."
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, Ms. Kirby, please take our vote. With a vote of five ayes, we have approved the addition of grades 9th through 12 at 1407 North Alta Mesa Drive, Mesa, Arizona 85205, to be named Shepherd College Preparatory, starting in the 2026-27 school year. Enrollment for the 2026-27 school year will begin with 9th grade students. And Ms. Benzah, thank you so much for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. And thank you all for being here. We will now move on to E. Do I have a motion to approve, to approve the intergovernmental agreement, Arizona Department of Education Teacher Registration Apprenticeship Program?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussions, starting with Ms. Hutchinson? And sorry, I moved really fast. And I'm, I apologize. I'm just really glad that someone else is over here trying to sort through their papers. So thanks for making me feel a little better.
No, that's okay. I, I do not have any questions. I understand the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. So I have just two quick questions. This is, my understanding is this is an apprenticeship, an apprenticeship program, such that I'm hired-
This is, my understanding is this is an apprenticeship, an apprenticeship program such that I'm hired potentially as an IA, an instructional assistant who wants to be a teacher and I'm, this is providing them with a financial pathway to get there, correct?
Member Benson, committee board, in a way, just quickly, the registered, teacher-registered apprenticeship program aligns with the US Department of Labor, which has had an apprenticeship program for different fields, construction, IT, things like that. And now, or it has, has had education as well. Arizona's just been kind of late to the ballgame when it comes to teacher apprenticeship programs. And so the Arizona Department of Ed sought out Mesa Public Schools and another school district to be the first districts to have such model, really because they have a strong faith in our pathways programs, our path to teach programs, et cetera. In this particular program, and we can't expand it, but in this particular program, we're looking at our high school graduates who went through the ed professions program who are aspiring to become teachers. And in this model, they get employed by us filling a need for us like an instructional assistant while they're going to call, attending college. We have five who are currently in, if, right now, they're attending Mesa Community College under the Mesa Promise. So you can see we're building the pipeline and also filling our needs in our schools and also giving them great job embedded experiences in IA under the mentorship of the master teacher, their teacher. And then when they graduate with their four-year degree, they're now employable and hired as a teacher and they have more confidence because they had that exposure and some experiences in this classroom. Really, an IA can go to school at night and never tell us they're going to school at night anyway to pursue a teacher program, but this is more of a bona fide program in alignment with Arizona Department of Ed as a partnership. So through the US Department of Labor, their Arizona Department of Ed has this grant and they can use that grant to help support those, in our case, five individuals in this apprenticeship program. So they'll, they can use a grant to buy clothing that's professional dress for a teacher. They can help buy coursework materials with it. So transportation, maybe they need a, a gas card or something like that. So the grant is really to support these five individuals who are IAs for us, meeting a need for our school district and the IA job because we have some still unfilled. Plus it's helping us with that teacher pipe, building that teacher pipeline when they graduate. So we work with them, see Mesa Community College in our, in this case, because this is our first year, we work with them and coincide to make sure that we give these individuals the best experiences both in our school district, but also in their college as they're pursuing the college of ed degree.
Okay, so on the chart that we have, the MPS district budget, I assume that journey worker, that's the mentor teacher, correct? Did I read that correctly?
There, there are opportunities for us to get stipend, pay the teacher a stipend for being a mentor.
Okay, that's.
So rather than just being IA, IA supporting, the IA is supporting that classroom, but the teacher is also involved in building the capacity of the IA.
Right, so that's the journey person, correct?
Yeah.
And then the other things that are in this budget are for the apprentice to have access to, to help support their educational position.
That's correct.
Okay. And I think that's the only, oh, how is this different from the associate teacher program that we currently have?
So we partner with Arizona State University with what's called the Teacher Fellows Program where, when we worked with Arizona State University, we aspired to remove some barriers. Going back to, most barriers are designed by the employer. It's also designed sometimes by us, but also by the college and university as well. And so we wanted these individuals to, to have school-related experience, be like an instructional assistant in our, in our campus. To meet the paraprofessional credit or credentials, you have to have an IA degree, 60 college credits or pass the paraprotest. So some individuals have that 60 college credits already or that associate's degree. And perhaps they aspire to now finish their bachelor's degree and become a teacher. And so ASU has worked with us to make sure that A, they're able to comfortably work without feeling the heat and also not having to take exhaustive night classes until 10 o'clock at night. So we really kind of worked the structure out for the schedule for the benefit of that individual. With that said, we can also develop a teacher apprenticeship program for not just the high schoolers going to the four-year program while being aid, but also, we can also apply, similar to the Teacher Fellows and Apprenticeship Program, we just have not done that. The other district that's applied this apprenticeship program, that's what they're leveraging, where we're, we're more focusing on moving forward those individuals through the ed professions who are aspiring to be a teacher and getting that four-year degree.
Thank you. Ms. Walden?
Yeah, so thank you. And this is the first time that this is coming for the board, this grant, right? Okay, that's what I.
That is correct.
Yeah, because we, so we got some questions about it. There was a news story that gained some traction and it said in it, candidates only need a high school diploma or GED to apply for the apprenticeship program. And it got a lot of attention because the headline said, "High School Diploma Qualifies for Teacher Program." And so that made people really concerned that we'd have teaching in the classroom for students without the proper education.
There's probably a word for it, but those images that you see where if you look at one side, you see something, you look in the other side, you see something else. When I first read that article, I did not, maybe because I already knew what the apprenticeship program and what it meant, I did not see it that way. But then when I heard some question, or got some questions about it and I reread it, I still have it open actually, I'm like, okay, I can see how somebody reads it entirely different. So perhaps their word choices was not correct, but it's really aspiring individuals who will eventually become a teacher and providing them job embedded experiences such as an IA while they're attending college.
And then I'm assuming we clarify, make sure people understand that there's still a background check or fingerprint clearance card to be in the classroom?
Yep, they have to meet the credentials of, just like any other, they're an employee, they're an aide. They're no different than the aide who attends college at night that we don't even know they're attending college at night. They have to meet the, the credentials of an employee. They are our employee.
All right. Thank you. I'm glad you read the article too, because you spurred some, spurred some community interest.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Chappie.
Yeah, they definitely could have chosen their words differently and also the acronym is AZTRAP. I'm like, that is my least favorite Arizona, my least favorite education acronym out there. Maybe my most favorite, I don't know. But I agree. So I'm just going to ask yes or no question. We do not have 18-year-olds recently graduated from high school working as teachers in Mesa Public Schools as part of this program?
No.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions. Ms. Kirby, I think we're ready for a vote. With a vote of five yays, we have approved the intergovernmental agreement, Arizona Department of Education Teacher Registered Apprenticeship Program. Don't say that 10 times fast. Thank you. All right, we are through action items. We are now on to first read of updated policy 5-209, School Libraries, Media and Resource Centers. Ms. King, can you review the updates with us?
I was prepared to review the new policy with you since I did not propose the library policy.
So, yeah, let's just see, is there any questions on the, the updated policy for 5-209? Board members, any questions on that? Ms. Hutchinson, I'm going to go over.
Yeah, okay, so I'm, I'm not quite sure that the source of the policy. Who wrote the policy? The new proposed 5-209 School Libraries, Media and Resource Centers.
Yeah, Board Member Hutchinson, this is a policy that Member Benson and I worked on together collaboratively under the advice of legal counsel to make sure that we were in alignment with state statute and to update our, our library policy to make sure that it was in alignment based on legal counsel.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have the additional information for the policy is in red, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess my question is, the, let's see, it would be the third paragraph which is in red after the first two bullet points. And there are, let's see, there's two additional bullet points that are added. So would you, I'm, I'm just asking, why do you feel that these two bullet points are needed?
Board Member Hutchinson, after attending the ASBA conference, it was apparent that this is an area that, that can be opening our districts open to, to legal issues. We want to make sure we're in alignment with all possible situations. And so we worked together to revise this policy to make sure that our parents had a clear opt-out procedure if there were things that didn't align to their family values and also to make sure that we were in alignment with ARS 15-120.03C. These were things that were missing from our policy in the past and so we just wanted to make sure that we were in alignment and added those in.
Okay, thank you very much for the explanation. I really appreciate it. I was wondering if you would be agreeable to maybe some edits?
Do you have proposals?
I have, I have a suggestion and just to make the second bullet point maybe a little bit more clear and not as, as wordy, but I'm not sure that that's, this is the proper time to do that. Would, might be better if I just sent it to you and see if you would, if you would agree to it?
Yeah, no, because I've already worked with another board member on it. So let's just talk about it in an open meeting.
Right now?
Yeah.
And Member Hutchinson, are you talking about the establish a clear opt-out procedure, which is easily accessible and applies to all libraries, including classroom libraries, for any and all materials that are not directly related to, colon, content, curriculum or standards?
Yeah, it's, it's long.
It is long. I will tell you that we have already a clear opt-out procedure. This is just putting it into our policy since we vote on policy. And that part about including classroom libraries was included in the discussion at ASBA that they highly recommended that school districts included that part. And we know that the district has a strong policy, a strong process for that already to make sure that, that our classroom libraries align with our policy. It is not my favorite grammatical sentence, but as we know, not all legal documents are. So unless you are like strongly opposed to it, I do know this has been reviewed, as we know, by legal counsel. I would recommend, since none of us are lawyers, that we lean on the legal advice and leave it, even though it's grammatically awkward.
I don't know, my, my, I've graded lots of essays. So I, I, this is what I would suggest, that we establish a clear and accessible opt-out procedure for all libraries, including classroom libraries, for any materials that are not directly related, sorry, my screen's going, to curriculum or standards.
Okay, since this is a first reading, I will write up those statements and include them in our second reading for next time.
I'm happy to provide a copy to Ms. Kirby and if she would like to include it. I just think it, it just makes it a little bit more, more clear and streamlines it a little, I think it reads a little bit easier and.
Yeah, I love the grammar of that much better. Thank you for editing it. I like it. Yeah, that's great.
Anything else, Ms. Benson?
No, one of the reasons that we, I feel really strongly about adding the additional piece that includes AS, ARS, pardon me, 15-120, is one of the reasons that, .03, one of the reasons that we have families leaving Mesa is because they are concerned about materials that may be in our libraries that are, that are sexually explicit in nature. They, so this, in my mind, puts one piece that parents can say, hey, okay, district leadership is listening to us, we don't want our kids exposed to this. So I feel like we, as a board, are doing our role, but then parents also have to do theirs. So if you, as Mrs. Chappie and I were, were working on this, she said, you know, I have gone through the process of having books either removed or restricted using the process that currently exists and the procedure that currently exists. So I want to also encourage parents to really take an active role in that. Don't assume that your kids are, take, take a look at what's in our libraries. It's easily accessible. Mrs. Chappie mentioned a resource she uses, which is Common Sense Media. There's another website, TakeBackTheClassroom.com. It's really important that we honor parents and their ability to raise their children with their values without interference. And so that's one of the reasons I think this is a step in the direction to tell our community, okay, my kids aren't going to be exposed to things if I don't want them to be. So that was my intent.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson. Ms. Walden?
Yes, yes, thank you. For President Davis, I just want to throw in that I really appreciate the way that you involve the board in procedures and give us the ability to weigh in and make updates on procedures. That's, that's been a really important change this year and definitely helps us be able to feel like we are, are doing our duty in, in governing. And we do have a good procedure here with a process for book removal, so I don't have any edits on it. I really appreciate the board members that were able to go to the ASBA Law Conference and incorporate the changes into the policy and procedure. And, you know, our role really is to make sure that the laws are upheld and I think, you know, the laws are there to, to provide equality for, for all families and parents. And so with this, with these changes and when we move forward in another meeting to adopt these changes, I feel confident that we can say that we're doing that, that we are upholding everybody's rights. And thank you, Board Member, or Clerk, Board Member Chappie and Benson for working on this and also for scheduling executive sessions so we could talk to counsel about, about all the legal issues and SCOTUS cases that go into library policy. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walden. Ms. Chappie?
I, I tell people often when they ask, what is it like to be on the school board? That it's actually really good, meaningful work and I appreciate the opportunity to work with a variety of perspectives. We have a range of families in our district and I want to honor all of those families. And so we, we really tried to be intentional to honor a variety of perspectives and family values as we evaluated this policy.
May I add one? I have one minor edit on procedure because we do have a process of, of either restricting access to books or removing them from policy. Now, one of the things that I, I actually want to highlight that Member Chappie and I really thought was important was extending the time of, for our Chief of Academics, that'll have to be changed. We increased days for you to be able to pull together a committee of people. And we also expanded the, the committee makeup. So under reconsideration of library book access, second paragraph, the, the sentence says, "The principal may call a study group of equal members." I think it should be shall call because may is optional.
Yeah, I'll send that up, I'll send that wording to Cameo.
Okay, thank you.
Make a note in the notes too.
Pardon me?
I said, yes, I'll also have a note that in the meeting notes that we'll make.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And that's, that's the only thing I have.
Could we, on the changes, like when they get sent, like have a different color or put in parentheses so we don't have to read them side by side?
Cameo's on the color coding?
Yeah.
So, yes, thank you. We will make sure that's done.
Yeah, I'm not good at color coding.
And thank you, board members, and I echo, I am grateful to work with people that, and we all bring different perspectives and I'm grateful for that and bring different, you know, shed different light. So thank you all for your input in this. All right, now, oh, yes.
I'm sorry, are we now going to talk about the procedure or were we talking about the procedure while we were talking about the policy?
All together.
Okay.
Yes, you want to go to procedure?
Yes, please, if you wouldn't mind. If we take a look at the second paragraph, it's.
Which page?
Of the, of, well, sorry, thank you for.
Page two.
Clarification, page two, thank you. And then the second paragraph, it says, "During the reconsideration process, the book in question shall require parental approval for checkout." I'm not sure why that has been added.
That was added under legal counsel. That was in that executive session where we received legal counsel to add that sentence.
I don't think we're supposed to be talking about what happened in executive session.
Oops. I, I don't think that's a violation of executive session when it's related to the law and it's, something stated in the law, it's public knowledge. something stated in the law, it's public knowledge.
Ms. King?
Yeah, and we hear the admonition at each board meeting, and anything discussed in an executive session is confidential.
Is something to board members that were in executive session together, can they have a discussion about it in private?
Yes.
In a legally-agenda executive session, you can. Wouldn't be discussing, and one-on-one, but not having a discussion.
Okay, I will rephrase my answer. Board member Hutchinson, we added that portion because the original statement was that the book in question would be removed from the library, and that we were advised that, I feel that it would be better that we have parental approval rather than removing the book entirely from the library. It still makes it accessible to students while it's under review, without removing it entirely from the library, because I don't want to see it completely removed from the library while it's under review.
With their parents' permission, correct.
Yeah.
I'm just double-checking our procedure, because I don't remember that being in the procedure, so.
What, that the book would be removed?
No, because it says, "During the reconsideration process, the book in question shall remain available for students." And this policy, this restructuring, is that it would require parental approval now to check out.
Yes, which still makes it available with parental permission. So my, I will tell you, when I worked on initially writing procedure, I wanted the book removed entirely until a committee had decided whether or not it was appropriate to even be on our bookshelves. Mrs. Chaffee and I reasoned together, this is a nice balance, so we don't remove it from circulation entirely, but that title, as it is being determined whether or not it is appropriate for general access, requires a parent who is actually responsible for the minor child, it gives them the ability to say, no, I don't want you to read that. And that's all it's doing. So it's not removing it entirely from access. It is giving parents back the power to say, my child is allowed to read this. No, I don't want my child reading it.
However, the parent can do that at any time. It doesn't have to happen during the reconsideration process, correct? A parent can.
This is part of the process. As the parent pulls that, this would trigger that, that it would be immediately assumed that because the parent was challenging it, it was then unavailable for parent time.
Then what you've got is one parent can challenge a book, and then it triggers a procedure than that all parents have to get involved in.
Well, a committee of parents. But yes, if you are a parent who would like your child to read that book, then you would have to provide written consent for your child to check out that book. And I will tell you, board member Hutchinson, I don't disagree with your perspective on libraries. I think that we have to often make compromises and represent our community. And for me, this policy and this procedure, and we don't vote on the procedure, but this policy represents, for me, good governance, and being willing to work with each other and make decisions that are good for the community, under good legal advice. And as I told member Benson, as we worked on this, there are lots of things that can pull our focus as board members, and it is really important to me that we stay focused on our board goals, and that we spend the majority of our meetings talking about things that are focused on board goals and student outcomes.
I totally agree with you. However, I believe what I heard was that the current procedure pulls the book from the shelves. And that is not, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, that the current procedure says that during the reconsideration process, the book in question shall remain available for students. And the change would be the book in question shall require parental approval for checkout. So there is a change. That's all I'm pointing out.
Thank you.
And I do appreciate the work that you have put, both of you have put in, and the collaboration that you have exercised to put this forward. I don't want you to assume that I am not appreciative of the work that was done. I just wanted to make sure it was a clarification.
And to clarify, what member Chaffee was saying is, as we, because I made some changes to procedure to present, and I wanted the book completely eliminated from the library shelf, until a decision had been made as to appropriateness. So that, I think, is the change that she was suggesting, not the change from the initial procedure that the board had already been, or already had in place. That's what you're saying, correct? Yeah, because I am, I will tell you, I'm by far more of a hardliner on this, because I don't believe any sexually explicit materials belong in our libraries whatsoever. It is up to a parent to determine whether or not their child is psychologically and emotionally ready to handle the material that is in some of the books. And just for a quick example, and I actually looked this up, because I went, no, that can't possibly be true. But some of our high schools have Game of Thrones books, novels on their bookshelves. I've never watched Game of Thrones, and I haven't read any of the materials, but somebody said, well, oh, did you, were you aware that viewership on Pornhub dropped substantially when Game of Thrones was on? So I went, no, that can't be true. Yes, participation on Pornhub dropped by 45% during season seven of Game of Thrones. That material, in my mind, doesn't belong on our shelves, period. It doesn't have educational value. And again, parents want the power to raise their children with their values and their structure. So we compromised substantially. I feel we compromised. We worked together. I would be by far more of a hardliner to completely protect children. But it is, as Mrs. Chaffee said, ultimately, it is the parent's responsibility. Like, we're going to do what we can as a board to keep materials as appropriate as possible, but it is ultimately up to parents. What do you want your children to have? How do you think your children are mature enough to access this material? That's not up to me, as a board member. It's not up to me as a teacher. It's not up to me as a principal or a librarian. It is up to the parent to determine that. So restricting access until that decision, and again, we broaden the committee to get multiple perspectives. We want, at one school, we want parents from that school, but also parents from the general population. So again, it's not just one homogeneous community that's looking at a book, but it is hopefully going to be able to take in multiple perspectives, to have the best possible materials in our libraries, in our, both in our barcoded libraries and our classroom libraries. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to clarify, I, board member Hutchinson was referring to the policy online, or procedure currently online, and member Chaffee was referring to the procedure that board member Benson had brought forth. That was the difference, the confusion. So just setting that straight. Mrs. Walden, did you have anything?
I know there's been some Supreme Court cases that have also influenced library policies. I didn't know if maybe, I think Mrs. Benson's really familiar with them, if you wanted to remind people.
Mahkmut B. Taylor.
What is it?
Mahkmut B. Taylor, that was decided this summer, that clearly stated that a parent had a right to, that it is in the parental purview, that they have the right to limit not just library books, but curriculum, that was not in alignment with their values.
Thank you.
Ms. Chaffee, you have? All right, all right, we're good? Okay, Ms. King, we're on to you. It's all you.
Thank you. Tonight, I bring to you policy 3110. For first reading, this is a new policy, that this is not a revision to an old policy. We're asking you to adopt a new policy. And this is just to ensure a shared understanding between the governing board and the superintendency about the authority to bind the district through a contract. So through this policy, we clarify that all intergovernmental agreements and any amendments to those are things that do legally require governing board approval. We want to clarify that if the district leadership wants to create new staff positions or purchase goods over a certain amount that you have set in policy, that the governing board needs to approve those types of contracts. But then we also wanted to clarify that other types of agreements, things like memorandum of understanding, partnership agreements, affiliation agreements, things that are really about the day-to-day operations of the district, we would like the board to grant that authority to the superintendent to enter into those contracts, and to give the superintendent and certain other members of superintendency the authority to sign on behalf of the contract. The other reason we want to ask the board to adopt this policy is, we have been discovering through the years that we have a lot of contractual arrangements that go on throughout the district that are not necessarily signed at the leadership level, and that does expose the district to a little bit of liability that we'd like to rein in, and create an understanding throughout the district that only those positions specifically designated by the governing board have authority to sign contracts on behalf of the district. And then the final point to this policy is, we, as we've entered this very data-heavy world, we've been more and more entering into data privacy and data sharing agreements with our vendors to ensure that our student and employee data is protected, and that it does not get disclosed and cause any type of leak of information. And so we do a lot of those. They're all very similar in nature, and we would like the board to allow those agreements to be signed by the chief technology officer, or if that position ever has its name changed, we've tried to account for that as well.
Thank you, Ms. King. Board member Hutchinson, any questions, comments? Okay, we'll come back around. Mrs. Benson?
No, I just have a comment. When I read through, when I read through this, the first question I asked was, wait, don't we, why don't we already have this? Like, don't?
Yes.
I mean, I just assumed we already, because we've delegated some authority to Dr. Strom, and then he has the authority to maybe have Dr. Eastless or Mr. Moore sign something, or Mr. Wang. So I was like, what, what do you mean, this is a new policy? So that's my only comment. And I think we need our DPA people, not necessarily here, but I keep getting settlement agreements from my data being linked, like, all over the place. So they do the best they can, but.
Yeah, that's why we are doing our best to safeguard all of our districts.
Yeah, those hackers are just, you know, probably former gifted kids.
Yeah. It's interesting that you mentioned that. I actually went searching through the policies to find this policy, and when I couldn't find it, I contacted the trust and said, why am I not finding this policy in our policy manual? And they were like, oh, there isn't a policy. So we wrote one.
Well, thank you for taking care of that. Mrs. Walden?
Thank you, Mrs. King, for that risk assessment and explaining that. And I don't have any proposed edits.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chaffee. All right, thank you. Back around, do you have anything? You good? Good work. Thank you very much. All right. We are now into informational item. Just really quick, with Dr. Strom's mid-year evaluation coming up in January, I wanted to make sure all board members, including our newly elected members, were familiar with the board-approved instrument. And that was printed out for us, and it's been shared in status a couple times. And like I said, it is printed out for you tonight. Does anyone have any questions about the instrument? And we'll start with Mrs. Hutchinson.
Yes, thank you very much. This morning, I was at the Mesa Public Schools Foundation Breakfast, and then went from that to Hacktivate, and Dr. Strom was with me in both of those events. And it triggered in me the importance of the promise, the MPS promise, and the MPS Portrait of a Graduate. Because in both events, now, the MPS Business Breakfast was with community leaders, and Dr. Strom spoke, and he started his State of the District address with the promise, and with the Portrait of a Graduate. And I watched as over 100 people were nodding in agreement. They know this promise. They know the Portrait of a Graduate. And then at Hacktivate, Ms. Montez reviewed the promise and the Portrait of a Graduate with our students, and had an activity where they chose an attitude that they could do better, or a skill from the Portrait of a Graduate that they could do better. And then throughout the day, the students linked what they were doing in Hacktivate with the Portrait of a Graduate. So I'm thinking, why aren't we linking Dr. Strom's evaluation with the promise and the Portrait of a Graduate? And I thought, where could we put that? So I respectfully submit for the consideration of the board two edits to the professional practices in standard five. And I believe that Ms. Kirby produced them for you, so you have a hard copy. And it would be, it's 5.1 and 5.2. And the first edit that I'd like you to consider would be that under the standard five, which is leadership, 5.1 would read, "Understands the critical importance of the MPS promise and the MPS Portrait of a Graduate to inspire others to higher levels of performance." Because I think that's what our promise and our Portrait of a Graduate does. It is, it's really the core of our being, and it's what inspires us as educators, whether we're certified, classified, we're board members, we're administrators. It's what makes Mesa Mesa, and it's what we want in our graduates, and I think it's what we ought to expect from each other, particularly the superintendent. My second edit, I think, is a slight edit, but I think you'll know where I'm coming from. The second edit would read, "Maintains a caring and professional relationship with stakeholders, not just staff, but stakeholders, that would be students and community, grounded in the MPS promise and the Portrait of a Graduate." 5.2 reads in shared district values. Well, I think the shared district values are the promise and the Portrait of a Graduate. So we're just making it a little bit more specific. So I respectfully submit those edits that would incorporate specific. So I, I respectfully submit those edits that would incorporate the promise and the Portrait of a Graduate so that it can be included in Dr. Strom's evaluation this year.
Okay. Board Member Benson, any thoughts? I, I need to, like, compliment, yeah. Because I actually saw the MPS promise and the MPS promise in particular embedded throughout without it saying the MPS promise and Portrait of a Graduate. So if you'll send those edits to me, Member Hutchinson, but I have it.
Yeah, you have it. Here, you could, it's there.
Oh.
You got it?
I have it.
There you go. Yep.
Again, I'm blaming my neck brace.
Listen, you're making me all feel a lot better about myself. You're good. Well, you look at that. Mrs. Walden, anything?
Yeah, I do think that the evaluation as it stands has plenty of opportunities to involve Portrait of a Graduate. This is the ASBA evaluation tool. We've used this tool for.
Oh, no, it wasn't ASBA.
This, this looks just like the one we've been using.
It is, it is. But we didn't get it from ASBA. We, we kind of meshed a New York model and a Wisconsin model and the ASBA model. And we masified it.
Okay. Well, it, it looks like the one that we've been using.
It is, it is. It certainly is.
So I'm, I'm, I think that it is robust and there's enough in here that we can involve those elements that you suggested without editing it. I know we've had Portrait of a Graduate for a while from before I was on the board. So I'm not sure why, why we want to address it in the evaluation now when it hasn't been done before.
Okay. I'd, I'd be happy to answer that question. We have a new superintendent. Our superintendent before had been a part of the process of Portrait of a Graduate and the promise when it was a community-based discussion and we actually, the community helped write it. I, I, I included it because Dr. Strom, being the new superintendent, that it would, it would reemphasize the Mesa values that he now leads the district with.
Okay. I appreciate that. Yeah. I, you know.
Just to be a little bit more specific.
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense. I do feel completely confident in Dr. Strom's ability to uphold the Portrait of a Graduate. I, I think that, I'd said, you know, this is a robust evaluation. So I think the wording and the questions already exist within the evaluation that we could consider that. And also, I think for the evaluation, we've got our board goals, but also we voted on Dr. Strom's 13 goals for the districts. I feel like the, the 13 goals are probably going to lead the evaluation more than, than some of the more, more broad aspects of Portrait of a Graduate. I think we're going to be more focused about what the actual goals are, which is typically what you do in an evaluation. And I'm just going to go into my corporate experience here, that I think mid-year is definitely not the time to, to change an evaluation or sort of change parameters on a direct report. I think that the timing is sort of, it's just unfair to, to staff, I think, to change things in the middle of a, of a contract. So I think if we do want to make changes, that maybe that's something that could come when we're starting a, a new year, a new evaluation process. Mid-year is just, just not the time. But again, I've been able to use this evaluation a few times since I've been on the board and I think it's, it's strong. There's, it's almost, there's so many questions that you almost could say there's like more redundancy versus needing to add things. But I think it'll be more than enough to ensure that we evaluate with our Portrait of a Graduate in mind and of course, the goals.
Okay. The reason that I, I wanted to include it under leadership is, is that we as a board have not talked about the tool with our, in applying it to our new superintendent. And so I actually requested that we have it as an informational item so that as a board, a new board with new members, so that we would have the opportunity to talk about it. And, and, and I thought it would be just a, an aspect of clarity that when we say ethical and professional behavior, that we are referring to our own Mesa promise and, and, and the Portrait of a Graduate, that shared district values, those, that is the lens. And, and it just came to me when I was watching the businessmen, it resonated with them. He's, we always start community presentations with it. And, and it seems that it's a value that employees have for each other. And, and it's, it's not a reflection on Dr. Strom whatsoever. I just thought it would help him to know what we meant as a board, what the district values were.
Yeah. And I, I, yeah, I kind of want to call it, sort of like a point of information with President Davis. I feel like that we're verging on, on an evaluation out in the open. We're really, there's a, a right, I think, for discussions to happen in, in private for these kinds of matters. Some of the comments that Mrs. Hutchinson are saying just sounds like it's verging on a critique right now. And I don't think that that's appropriate.
I don't, I don't mean it to be a critique whatsoever. I just, I just thought that as, as a, just, just for clarification, as a, as a new superintendent, what the board could mean. I mean, and if, if the board does not want any changes in language, I'm cool with it. I just, I'm making it as a suggestion.
I just, yeah, I think for the agenda item, that the point would be for the board members that have not gone through an evaluation, do you have changes you want to make to the, to the item? But I, I, I just feared that we're just, some of your comments, to me, seem like they were coming across that word in a way that were not related to the agenda item.
I appreciate the, the notice that we kind of want an opportunity as new board members to weigh in on this. And I know we're getting late, so I'm going to be mindful of time. As a new board member, I just want to reiterate that I really love that our board wants our work and the superintendent's work to be focused on student outcomes. I appreciate that Dr. Strom has aligned his goals with our board, board goals. And as a board member, I want more of our board meetings focused on data and strategies on improving outcomes. So as a new board member, I've had the opportunity to review this tool. I feel very comfortable using it. And since we have an evaluation, a mid-year evaluation coming up in January, I don't recommend we make mid-year changes. And I would recommend that we make any of those adjustments maybe late spring so that then we can have them in place for the next year. I will tell you, I'm not willing to remove the words ethical and professional behavior from the evaluation tool.
I appreciate your, I think it prompted, this morning prompted, probably that, you know, just under leadership, I actually don't think it would be under 5.2. Standard five is leadership of the district. So that's the way I read standard five. So 5.2 says professional relationship with staff. That would be appropriate. If we wanted to involve the community, I think that's in standard one, that's vision and culture, because that, to me, extends beyond. But five, am I reading standard five correctly? It's how is he running the ship? So that is just with staff. And I would actually have a problem with the word caring because that, to me, is very ambiguous. What's caring to one person is... So I, I don't want to change it before January either, but I do think.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is we're going to leave the evaluation tool for mid-year in the spring. Cameo, help me be my brain. In the spring, in our notes, we will put to, after we've gone through the mid-year, make, if there's any changes for the next year evaluation. All right.
Madam President, before you move on, I just want to model what we expect in Mesa Public Schools from evaluation process. Evaluation tool is the governing boards to decide as a five-member team. I love evaluation. And the reason I love evaluation is because I'm a constant improvement guy. And so I'm looking forward to my mid-year evaluation. So you can give me feedback on things I need to get better at, on the things that I'm doing well. And I'm going to constantly look to the board to help me point myself in the direction of where improvement needs to occur. And the reason I'm saying all this is so we can help our staff lean into continuous improvement at all turns of the corner. You modeling that behavior with me, me modeling that behavior with you, helps us all downstream realize, hey, we are a continuous improvement culture and it's positive to get critical feedback on how to improve both leadership and outcomes for kids. So I just needed to say that. So whatever you guys decide, I'm very respectful.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And that brings us to the end. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, feature.
Well, Mrs. Mann's already packing up. So apparently we have to move and second it.
Do I have a second?
I think Mrs. Bacca is too. I'll second it.
Miss Hutchinson and Miss Benson, and any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Kirby, please take our vote.
Should I vote? No. It's 9:11. Just kidding.
You're knocking on the door.
Oh, I have my gate.
Come on.
Hello.
Sorry, it wants to Google Translate me. There we go.
With a vote of five, yays, the meeting is adjourned at 9:56. Thank you all for being here tonight. Have a wonderful evening.